A call to order the Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022 Town Council Regular Meeting to order at 6:36. Clerk McCauser?
Yes, I'm trying to see, oh, we have Counselor Parker online and also the town managers online also. And everybody else is here. I can run down the names if you'd like.
Up to you.
I'd like to, I'd like to, if I could by my agenda.
Sure.
Okay. We have Counselor Bordelon, Counselor Baumgartner, we have Counselor Cassieri, Counselor Franco, Counselor Jones, Counselor McBride, Counselor Parker, and Counselor Westervelt. You're all here.
Thank you. And that is the quorum. Onto the salute to the flag.
Leading us in the pledge tonight are Lieutenant Andrews from the Coast Guard Academy and Petty Officer Colgate from the submarine base.
Thank you, Abbot, tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you for that. Onto recognition, awards and memorials. Today we have Fourth of July Parade Awards to hand out. Mr. Jerry Locken.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Locken from Groton Parks and Recreation. We put on the largest Fourth of July Parade in the area. This year we had about sixty groups. And tonight, we're here to recognize those groups that were in the parade that were selected by our judges as the top participants in our parade. We did have a number of counselors at the parade and a number of youth groups, veterans groups, businesses, and all kinds of people in the parade. So without the community standing behind us, we wouldn't be successful. So thanks, everybody, for that. And tonight, so without further ado, I'm going to call up Most Patriotic Award goes to the United States Coast Guard Academy Reserve Officer Candidates. And here representing them tonight is Lieutenant Cassidy. Lieutenant Cassidy Andrews. And we have Best Music Award goes to the Stars and Stripes Band. And here tonight is Russ Holly. We have an annual award winner here tonight. The Best Youth Participation goes to the Groton Mystic Youth Football and Cheer Group. And here tonight is Keona Strickland. Thank you, Keona. And Keona is going to run right out the back door. We have a National Night Out event going on at Paquonic Plains Park tonight. So the volunteers that Keona and her group organized, they're over there serving food to hundreds and hundreds of people here tonight. And everything over there is free. So if you get done here tonight, please come over to Paquonic Plains Park. And the last award we have here tonight is the Judges' Choice Award going to the Submarine School, Silver Dolphins. And Petty Officer Colgate is here to accept the award. And we had just one last award, and I don't believe they're here tonight, but in case you are. We had the Best Costume Award went to Full Power Radio. Thank you very much.
Mr. Locken, thank you, Mr. Locken, for that. And to all of our participants in our Fourth of July Parade, it was a very successful parade and I had, it was a great pleasure for me to be able to walk in that as well. Onto our public hearing on the introduction of an ordinance to establish property tax abatement. Clerk McCauser, do you read the opening of that, or do I?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Find it. Okay. Issue to ordinance to establish a property tax abatement for surviving spouses of fallen emergency workers. A public hearing is open at 6:41. And I don't believe we have anyone signed up for that. Okay. Will anyone like to speak on that at this time? Right here, you can just approach. So just to be clear, this is just for the tax abatement? Correct. I just need your name and address for the record if you want to speak in the public hearing.
Thank you. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive. In regards to the tax payment deal for the fallen spouses of fallen public safety personnel, I'm in favor of the current language as it stands that includes the federal employees that work on the Navy Base. They turn out regularly for, to assist town personnel. And so anyone that lives in the town of Groton that works in public safety, that happens to work on the sub-base, I think is entitled to the same protections and supports that we would offer to anyone else. I would just say again, logical consistency, you know, if you offer it to a few, offer it to the all that fall into that category, otherwise, don't pass it at all and don't offer it to anyone. Simple choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the surviving spouse ordinance? There is public comment, but this is not that. This is just on this ordinance. Okay. Seeing no other hands, I will close the public hearing at 6:43. Onto receipt of citizens petitions, comments and concerns. Receipt of citizens petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens to address the council. Please sign the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting room. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. To speak during this portion of the meeting via Zoom, please email council@groton-CT.gov by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. And I just have one note before we do receipt of citizen petitions. I am receipt of an opinion by our town attorney that the short-term rental ordinance that is on our agenda tonight will have to go through, through public hearing again. So the council will not be acting on it this evening. Okay? First on my list, I have Nip Tanner. Just need your name and address from the record, please. And after that, I have Eugenia Valagra.
Hi, I'm Nip Tanner. I live at 36 Church Street in Noank. Until this past July 31st, when my term expired, I was a member of the Noank Zoning Commission. As you may be aware, the zoning commission, the zoning commission of the Noank Fire District spent more than two years investigating the question of whether to allow short-term rentals in the district. Research was done on what other towns were doing, public workshops were held. We drafted some possible regulations, had an information meeting to share those with folks in the fire district. All this was done to try and get as much input and as much deliberation about the question as possible. While this was going on, the proponents of short-term rentals nominated one of their members, an operator of a short-term rental, to run against the chair of the zoning commission, who was, his seat was the only one open for election a year ago, the annual meeting 2021. We had a terrific turnout, largest one that anyone can remember for an annual meeting, and was a very contentious election, but the chair won. And I think this is the closest thing to a referendum on the question that one could imagine. And the reelection of the chair indicated a support for no short-term rentals. Later that year, August, about a year ago, the commission decided unanimously not to allow short-term rentals in Noank. Given that that is quote "settled law" in Noank, I would encourage the council, when it revisits the question of what it's going to do for the townwide, to include an exemption for the Noank Fire District. If you don't do that, and you have a process whereby people can get a permit from you, it will still be illegal in Noank, and the Noank Fire District will go after the people to get them not to operate. That would be a mess, and I think it's in both our interests not to have that happen. If you...
Thank you. Next on the list, I have Eugenia Valagra, followed by Mary Cuthbert.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick consideration, if it could be considered.
Sure.
If everyone else is okay with it that signed up before folks that maybe have children, it might be, you know, consider it folks that did not maybe have childcare that wanted to be here tonight to speak. And since we only have our meetings once a month, at some point, maybe consider moving them to the top of the list if everybody else is okay with that.
Thank you. Eugenia Valagra?
Thank you. And good evening, town councilors, mayor Melendez, and members of the town council and staff. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Liz Reisbeck, Zell Stever, and myself to urge you not to finalize a proposed ordinance on short-term rentals that is before you for several reasons. Short-term rentals fall in the area of regulated land use, which is the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. While there may be actions related to STRs, short-term rentals, that the council will want to take, we believe it is a serious mistake to move forward on this proposal without first consulting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is our understanding that Planning and Zoning has asked for such consultation. Parts of your proposed town ordinance clearly fall under their purview, such as off-street parking or garbage management, which are regulated land use activities. To wander into the territory of land use regulation is a serious mistake for the council and will create confusion and possible conflict among the public. We are very disappointed that the town council voted against meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission at the July 12th committee of the whole meeting, where you referred the proposed ordinance to the town council for a final vote. Meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss areas of concern and possible solutions to the short-term rental situation could be helpful. Failure to do so could result in two different enforcement systems, which would be confusing to the public, to say the least. Our reading of state statutes indicates that existing short-term rentals are not automatically grandfathered when the Planning and Zoning Commission passes regulations related to them. Rather, the only properties that would be grandfathered are those that existed before the municipality enacted a zoning code. We would appreciate the town attorney sharing with the public their legal opinion, both on this matter and the state statute that purportedly grandfathered short-term rentals from being further regulated. Also, contrary to the legal advice we heard at the July 12th Cal meeting, we believe that state law states that any activity not regulated by a municipality is not legal. Therefore, short-term rentals are not legal in Groton until the town makes them legal. This is the advice council gave to Noank when its zoning commission considered options for regulating short-term rentals. Ultimately, Noank decided not to establish a zoning code, but to consider short-term rentals unregulated and therefore illegal. This is less likely to happen in a town the size of Groton, which already has short-term rentals in the hundreds. Our regulatory system needs to be put in place soon, and it needs the expertise of the Planning and Zoning Commission to do it. The council does not have the expertise or long-term experience that most members of the Planning and Zoning Commission have to work through appropriate regulations for something as complex as short-term rentals. We are deeply concerned that the town council is trying to legalize short-term rentals by declaring them to be defined as dwelling units. This strategy is unlikely to withstand legal scrutiny. Short-term rentals are commercial businesses that happen to be located in dwelling units. That is a fact. Their purpose is strictly commercial, not residential. We cannot help noticing the similar strategy that was taken by the zoning official in declaring data centers to be communications facilities like cell towers and therefore already regulated. The town was forced to back down on this ill-designed strategy once already. It is not clear to us what the town council is trying to accomplish with this ordinance drafted years ago by the town staff for the previous council. There is no need for the town council to act now on short-term rentals. Moving this proposed ordinance forward will cause confusion and increase conflict in the public because the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to do its job and establish its own short-term rental regulations. We strongly encourage you to meet with the Planning and Zoning Commission to achieve consensus on the areas each body should appropriately address and when on this contentious matter. And now I would like to move on, as part of my five minutes, to speak to, as a representative of Groton Conservation Advocates, in support of the concept of complete streets. We support this because complete streets will promote more walking and biking. The more residents who are encouraged to walk or bike to work or to run errands, the cleaner Groton's air, the healthier Groton's people, and the better quality of life for all in Groton. While traveling through Nova Scotia and Canada last June, my husband and I enjoyed their safer, complete streets. I read an article in a Halifax newspaper about how local merchants rewarded customers who rode bikes to go shopping with discounts. Hopefully, complete streets can be a collaborative effort between the town and the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce to promote a healthier and more environmentally sustainable Groton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next I have Mary Cuthbert, followed by Elizabeth Pandary.
Councilors and mayor, thank you for letting me speak. I live, my name's Mary Cuthbert, and I live on, at 13 Main Street and Noank in Groton. I do urge you to support the position paper from Groton Homes Not Hotels on the proposed ordinance regulating short-term rentals, and to vote no. STRs are not a permitted use in the town of Groton and should remain so. STRs do not belong in residentially zoned neighborhoods. The so-called property rights that people are, you know, saying in the papers, they claim that they can do whatever they want with their property, opens a Pandora's box, that if it allows STRs, why not hair salons, used car lots, and more? Residential zoning is supposed to protect property owners from living next door to commercial enterprises, and there is no question that STRs are a commercial business and they make a lot of money for people. To allow them these regulations is to grant permission to operate them. I would urge you also to wait for that horsey-written group report, and then look at their methods and make sure that they are representative and fair. How did they come up with their statistics, or how did they come up with their rules and regulations? Because in the end, people want neighbors. Neighbors want neighbors. And we in Noank believe that our property values have gone up as we have become a haven for those who want privacy, security, and a community way of life versus living next door to an ever-changing array of strangers. Ask yourselves, would you want to raise your children next door to an STR? Would you want your young children to be subject to the partying and often rude behavior from STR renters that we know does exist? There are no positives when it comes to changing the face of neighborhoods and residential zones by permitting STRs. The proposed ordinance are not well thought out. They don't include mention of the Noank Fire District, or even Mumford Cove in their exclusions. And Groton Long Point has, allows STRs somehow. So we in Noank fought long and hard to preserve our community way of life, and our Planning and Zoning Commission listened to us. I am proud to say that our Noank neighborhood is once again quiet and safe, and I can tell you that it is cleaner, it's quiet. No one's racing around, nobody's stone walls are getting hit. And then Newport, Rhode Island, just banned standalone STRs, and I was there about a week ago. And that zoning officer is going door-to-door to prove that the owner occupied are really living there, and most of the times, they're not. This is, you can't regulate STRs. So anyway, I believe that it deserves a no vote. And I also again request that if any Groton Town Council member, town attorney, or their immediate family members own and/or profit from STRs, that they must recuse themselves from voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Elizabeth Pandary. Just need your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor and town councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Elizabeth Pendry. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my family. We live at 83 High Street in Groton. That the Groton Town Council intends to pass an ordinance regulating short-term rentals in Groton, exempting the city of Groton and Groton Long Point from the regulation, but not Noank, is tremendously concerning to us and our neighbors. Over a period of two or more years, Noank has addressed the issue of whether short-term rentals are appropriate for our community through thoughtful discussion, careful deliberation, comprehensive research, and overwhelming input from the community. The eventual decision was that short-term rentals are not, and must not be, a permitted use. Since Noank's decision to enforce the ban on STRs, speculators and outside investors running illegal small hotels from afar have closed shop, sold their properties, moved on. Full-time residents and families are moving into Noank, attending local schools, participating in the community. Two new businesses have opened up in the village, a provisions and pizza shop and a bakery. Residents now feel a sense of relief, knowing that the house for sale next door will not be sold to an investor or hedge fund intending to open up a small hotel with a frequent churning of strangers in and out at all hours. They will have neighbors with whom to form relationships. Calm has been restored to our community. Groton Town Council must be mandated to enforce residential zoning to prevent short-term commercial letting of housing. The proliferation of these properties is a huge problem for housing affordability and availability, for the living conditions of neighboring residents, and for the legitimate tourism accommodations of providers. Noank made the right decision regarding short-term rentals. We truly hope that Groton Town Council will respect Noank's decision. Please reach out to the Noank Zoning Commission and to members of the community because we have a lot of wisdom and experience to share on the topic of short-term rentals. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. At this time, I will invite up anybody who has children to speak at this time. And I just need your name and address for the record.
My name is Valerie Levy. We live at 159 Mather Avenue. I apologize. We live at Branford Manor, 159 Mather Avenue. There was an air quality test done at our home on July 1st. We have only lived in our apartment for eight months. We moved in there from Washington State November 18th. We had no visual signs of mold. It was offered to me to do an air quality test. I accepted. While we were waiting for the results to come back, my daughter, she has a 504 special accommodation for air conditioners. The air conditioners became infested with mold. We started to become sick. We both are coughing, have mucus. She vomited in the night, all over us. There's a lot more side effects. Her eyes are bothering her, sometimes nausea. She complains, "My tummy hurts, mommy." We had to stop using air conditioners last year. Where we live in Washington State got to 108. She had to go to the hospital for heat sickness, and that's part of her 504. And the air quality test came back that before there were any visual signs of mold, there was mold in the air. The air quality on the inside, that is, there's no evidence on the outside, but on the inside of our home has caused for mold to grow, not just in our air conditioners, not just in all three of them, but in our vacuum as well. Our vacuum is infested with mold. And there is now signs of mold on our bathroom fan. Branford Manor has been very slow to react to this. Our home is very hot. We are not equipped to not have the air conditioners on. They are mostly just wanting to dispute things. It has been very frustrating in attempts to navigate them. I have sent pictures of this evidence, not just to Branford, but to some of the council members and to the mayor and deputy mayor to try to just keep everyone informed as best as I can. And we've only lived there eight months, but there are families who have lived there so much longer, who have been living in and are living in really, really bad conditions. I didn't know what we were getting into. We came here with just our suitcases, and we knew no one at the time. And I'm grateful for the community for helping us, but everybody is in a really, really bad place. And when I take her home tonight, it is really bad in there. It's so bad, you can taste it. If anybody here on the council would like to come to my home, I want to invite you, please. You know, you, I mean, I give out my email, my phone number. I want you to come to my home and see, we've only lived there eight months. You know, we need help. Our neighbors need help. Branford needs help. You know, our lives matter too, just like anybody else's lives in all of the community. You know, my daughter, she matters. All of the children there, you know, the young and the old, no matter what. It is in the air. I have, to my memory, I think I have provided the air quality test to some of the council members and to the mayor and deputy mayor. If I'm wrong about that, then I'll correct it, or maybe their emails were attached to it. You guys have picture evidence, you have, I mean, it's in, it's in the air. It's on our possessions. It's infecting our home and our possessions and our health, and we are breathing it. No matter, you know, we're personless. We don't have a basement, by the way. We live on Mather. We don't, we don't live on Branford. We have no basement. And our home was, I learned that before we moved in, it was previously infected with mold. infected with mold. And so Branford is allowing for people to still get on the waiting list and move people in when there are really, really horrible conditions. I really feel that they should shut the waiting list down, or if they do accept clients, to not move clients in, or residents, excuse me, until this, until current people are taken care of. We shouldn't have neighbors who are either used to a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, living in hotels or motels, and then they're moving in new residents when they're not taking care of their current residents. And I am really scared and really intimidated to speak with anybody, you know, at Branford, I'm scared to go in the office in person, you know, it's very, 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 very frustrating. And when I reached out on one of the Branford Facebooks, that's the only social media I have, I asked my neighbors, you know, about the air conditioner, and six neighbors got back to me, and they said every season their air conditioners become infested with mold, and they clean them, and they sanitize them, and they maintain them over many multiple times in the season. I mean, I had just cleaned mine with Lysol to the best of my ability downstairs one, the two upstairs ones, I wasn't, I attempted, even maintenance tried to help me do it, and they couldn't even get them open, but in a manner--
Thank you, time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town clerk, and they'll be put on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much.
If anyone else has children at this time, they can approach the podium to speak, just need your name and address for the record.
Hi, I am Marilyn Monagas from Building 43, Apartment 242 in Branford Manor. I have also brought the expanded fungal report of the air quality test. I have previously come to complain about the mold, you know, the lack of storage space that will be created once the basements are shut down, but it was really, as I said, I felt there, you know, mediation for all the complaints about the mold, especially mold in my own unit. I've recently failed a pulmonary lung function test, I've been having horrible trouble breathing, I'm on my fourth case of pneumonia this year, I've been relocated. I was first moved to the Spring Hill Marriott, which did not accommodate my boys, I had to basically stop breastfeeding because it would wake them at night. Thankfully, within about a week and a half, because I complained that their manager on shift kept making inappropriate comments in front of my children, they did move me to the residential, the Residence Inn, where we have currently been. It is a significant 20-minute drive due to that, they have missed practically all of their programs. They're bored out of their mind. I know that when you call the office, they treat you like you're on vacation, you're getting continental breakfast, you're getting a pool, all of this. It's not a vacation at all. My oldest can't go to the pool by himself, I can't go with the youngest. Have a trouble breathing, sorry. Unfortunately, I did return to the apartment after about a month away. They had left a piece of the molding trim on the stairs, I did not see it, I had to return to pick up things for the children. It was about 6:00 in the morning that I returned, and I slipped on it, caught myself by the two railings I have, and landed directly on the nails, which resulted in 26 stitches that I'm currently healing from. It's fantastic. I'm having a pretty difficult time. My air report says that there is significant air quality issues, not only inside the basement, the first floor, the second floor, but also just around my building as I am closer to the swamp than most residents, so it's not like you can walk outside and get the relief. I currently do albuterol treatments. It's still very difficult to get on with our tasks. School will be starting soon. My son is preoccupied, I mean worried, I should say, about how this will affect all the activities he wants to do. Being in Mystic, they have not provided any kind of transportation for the children. He has been accepted to Fitch, so he is worried that this will obviously affect his attendance and his ability to make grander decisions in the future. Unfortunately, I am too, as, you know, all of my children range in different age groups, and they do go to different schools, not making it easy to do a one-stop pickup, and like I said, you know, with the 20-minute additional, you know, drive time, gas prices, you know, I do have two dogs as well, it's just been more complicated. When you call Branford Manor, they now no longer respond to my calls, they do treat me condescendingly, as if, like I said, I'm on vacation, and I guarantee this is no vacation, I would prefer to just go home. I have the report here, they said again, they're coming tomorrow, they said that on the 5th of July, they said that on the 20th of July, and now on the 3rd, so let's just hope that they keep their never-ending promises, and, you know, it's like little Annie sings, tomorrow's always a day away.
Do you want me to make copies and send that back to you?
No, I only made one copy.
Oh, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else has children, would they please approach the podium at this time if they wish to speak? Seeing none, next on my list I have Cindy Berry, followed by Bonnie Wavdell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cindy Berry, I live at 175 Laurelwood Road, and I am here representing myself, but also Ledge Light Health District and our Director of Health, Stephen Mansfield, in support of the adoption of a Complete Streets policy and program for the town of Groton. As a health educator, I'm dedicated to preventing chronic diseases at every stage of life by promoting good nutrition, regular physical activity, maintaining a healthy weight, and a smoke-free lifestyle. This includes working with community partners to establish policy, system, and environmental changes in places where people live, work, learn, and play. If you live in Groton, you know, and you see, that public health initiatives have included increasing the number of community and school gardens, improving farm-to-school opportunities, passing social host laws, strengthening tobacco curricula in our schools, establishing a new farmer's market in the city of Groton, and helping municipalities pass a smoke-free parks and beaches ordinance or policy. In the spring of 2021, Ledge Light Health District, in partnership with the Town and City Parks and Rec Department, Children First Groton, Yukon, and Yukon, hosted a series of Groton Town and City Bike Pedestrian Summits, mostly to learn and share among key stakeholders the great initiatives that were happening in both the city and the town. We wanted to identify gaps and needs, and we wanted to think about what we might be able to do to support and work with one another toward a more bike and pedestrian-friendly community. So, in the era of COVID, this is the quieter but diligent work of public health. It's our opinion, aligning with evidence-based strategies for healthy communities of Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, that a Complete Streets program will be successful, a successful strategy for the town of Groton. When we measure the health of a community, we ask to what extent does the community do things like adopt pedestrian bike plans, develop active design guidelines, require sidewalks and bike lanes, maintain a network of bike pedestrian paths, encourage and maintain green space, parks and trails, enhance access to public transportation within a reasonable walking distance, provide traffic calming measures, and adopt Complete Streets. All of these strategies have been proven to improve the health of the community, creating a place where people are or could be more physically active. Having a Complete Streets program in the town of Groton will come to prove, just like many towns and cities across the United States, that it reduces chronic disease. So that's like asthma, diabetes, heart disease, it increases physical activity, it improves safety, it reduces human exposure to transportation-related emissions, reduces motor vehicle-related injuries and fatalities, and also reduces transportation's contribution to air pollution. So, as your health department, it's been our honor to participate on the Complete Streets work group with Andre, thank you very much for your leadership, and we're eager to participate and share our time and our public health resources as you move forward towards the implementation of this work. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next on my list I have Bonnie Wavdell, followed by Catherine Pratt. Just need your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Wardle, and it's on 4 Conrad Street, Mystic, Connecticut, which is the Windy Hill area of Mystic. I'm here to speak against the Short-Term Rental Ordinance, as it's called. The first thing I want to say is why are we calling it Short-Term Rental? It's called transient lodging, that's the term that is used in the zoning laws, and that's the term the state has defined by the state. This is about corporations and people wanting to make money for various reasons by ignoring existing zoning regulations. I've read the regulations very clearly, and I do not see where transient lodging, except as defined as bed and breakfasts in residential zones, is allowed, and even then there's several regulations regarding that. So this ordinance just looks like an end run around zoning regulations, and if implemented, it's going to allow virtually unlimited transient lodging in residential areas. So why would anyone want to invest in a bed and breakfast or a hotel in Mystic when you can simply buy a house and run it without any regulations? Some say this creates wealth, well, that's kind of nice, but my house in Mystic will be more valuable, but I don't want to sell my house, I kind of want to live in it, and I want it to be quiet, and I don't want my taxes to go up because on either side of me, there's bed and breakfasts or transient lodging that can afford to pay a lot more because it's a commercial establishment. Tourism in Mystic undoubtedly contributes greatly to the Groton economy, but the major contributors are electric boat, the sub-base, nearby colleges, universities, hospitals, and other businesses. The Mystic tourism economy is already so overheated that parking is, traffic and parking are horrendous, businesses are ringing in temporary workers from overseas on special visas, and there's a problem housing those temporary workers. As a matter of fact, it was an article in the day that one woman is converting the hotel, it's a rundown hotel over on the Soington side of Mystic, into housing for her temporary workers, that's what she's working on, instead of using it for tourists, which was what it was originally intended for. People say that transient lodging isn't that disruptive, and I agree the majority is not disruptive, but I've heard the music, even though I'm almost a mile from downtown, I've heard neighbors talking about the overflowing trash that they see on the weekends, we're just supposed to deal with it, supposed to deal with the noise, the parking, moving things, who wants to do that? And I don't think the police want to deal with it either, and that's who's going to be enforcing it. Most people don't officially complain, I know I don't, I wait, see if things go away, and it might be several times this happens before I would make a complaint. So those people are getting actually several bypasses first, before anything happens. And then the ordinance is virtually toothless, there are no noise regulations that I can see in the town of Groton, I tried to look them up, noise is entirely subjective right now. Some people blasting, I say blasting Wagner is kind of educational and nice, and other people think it's an obnoxious nuisance. The limit is two people per room, but unlimited children under the age of 12. So a five-bedroom house, I think has been being used for short-term rentals on the entrance to my neighborhood, you could have 20 people in there on a family reunion, there are different people at reunion, parking, no parking requirements, they just have to tell you where you might be able to find some parking. Now, new apartments and restaurants in Mystic, they go to great lengths to try and show where they, they have to show where they're going to provide parking and not make the problem worse. If you have a bed and breakfast that you want to open in Mystic, you have to have onsite parking, not for this transient housing, nope. Good luck for your neighbors, I have no neighbors in the narrower streets down by Fort Rachel, yeah, it's a mess. By the way, the owner or the representative will have two hours to respond, and that can be by phone or text. So the neighbors and the police and whoever are going to have to deal with this for two hours, not the owners or the owner's representative. It's really going to fall on the neighbors to do this. And by the way, the owners are, the owner or the operator of the transient lodging has to display numbers and email addresses for who's the authorities and who to phone, and et cetera, et cetera. Well, who tells the neighbors who to phone if there's a problem? There's no requirement for that. This seems to protect the operator of, or owner of the transient lodging more than anyone else. And then it says the transient lodging, if they have an owner-operator, they're in charge of the fines, so what's the downside for the owner here? If it's a mess, there should be a downside. Okay, Groton has, another topic, Groton has a housing shortage, and converting residential housing into commercial transient lodging is not going to solve that problem. We need this for like the EBE, the sub-base workers. I know two families where one of the spouses grew up in Mystic, both families are doctors, and they want to move to this area, and they really would like to live in Mystic or that area, they can't find it, affordable housing. Some doctors, one's working overseas, they don't get paid that much. The Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments paper on transient, it's on the Groton Transient Lodging, OK, Short-Term Rental website, mentions balances in a way to mitigate impact of short-term rentals, none of these are found in the ordinance.
Time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town clerk, and they'll be placed on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Catherine Pratt, followed by Bunny Furlong.
My name is Catherine Pratt, and I live at 75 Front Street in No Inc. Mayor Melendez and members of the Town Council, good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to express my strong opposition to the Short-Term Rental Ordinance approved by the Committee of the Whole on July 12th, 2022. This ordinance was proposed by the previous Town Council and subject to a public hearing on November 3rd, 2021, after which time the short-term rental issue was appropriately referred to the Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. As I understand it, under the land-use power delegated to municipalities by the Connecticut General Statutes, the Zoning Commission exercises the exclusive power to enact and amend zoning provisions that regulate the use of land and structures in the town outside of the city of Groton, the borough of Groton Long Point, and the No Inc. Fire District, which exercised their own land-use authority by statutory grant. The capable individuals serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission have demonstrated a broad knowledge and understanding of the town's extensive zoning regulations and the complexities of the zoning process. They are currently addressing the short-term rental issue with a consultant hired by the town specifically to assist them in this effort, and should be allowed and trusted to complete their task before any other municipal actions are taken. The present proposed ordinance is seriously flawed. It erodes the autonomy of the zoning power vested in the zoning commissions of the town of Groton and the No Inc. Fire District, and appears to clash with the determination of the No Inc. Fire District Zoning Commission nearly one year ago to enforce the ban on short-term rentals under the Fire District zoning regulations. Moreover, the ordinance was developed before many of us recognized the magnitude of the incompatibility of commercial short-term rentals in residential zones, and the extent of the negative impact that short-term rentals have had on the real estate-- of the negative impact that short-term rentals have had on the real estate economy and the public welfare as a whole. In view of the significant intervening events since the ordinance was tabled, leaving it unchanged with the apparent goal of sidestepping the normal zoning processes and avoiding the inconvenience or delay of another public hearing was ill-considered. In summary, your resurrection and ratification of this misguided ordinance would inappropriately preempt the zoning power of both the zoning commission of the town of Groton and the zoning commission of the Noank Fire District. I respectfully urge you to categorically reject this proposed ordinance. The town council could, at a later date, if necessary, address through adoption of a townwide ordinance any remaining matters relative to short-term rentals that are beyond the scope of the various land use regulatory bodies of the town of Groton, city of Groton, borough of Groton Long Point, and Noank Fire District. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next I have Bunny Furlong, followed by Eric Smith.
Good evening. My take on this is very short, but I feel the proposed ordinance on short-term rentals would usurp the authority of the town's planning and zoning commission. It would prevent the PNC from regulating the STRs by recognizing all such rental establishments that register in the town, effectively legalizing them. The ordinance would require taxpayers to pay for the policing of the STRs while proposing only trivial fines for infractions. The town doesn't have laws against noise and light pollution. The only, the only purpose of this proposed ordinance, already entangled in a dispute over what municipalities it covers, is to weaken the PNC, which has successfully defended the town against two recent opportunistic ventures. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I didn't give my address. 57 Fish Town Lane, Noank, Mystic and Groton.
Thank you. Next I have Eric Smith, followed by Marshall Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Eric Smith. I live at 296 Elm Street in Noank. I understood you to say that this short-term rental ordinance will not be acted on tonight. You will announce a new public hearing, and there will be another public hearing held. So with that, I'm going to withhold my remarks till the later time. I did submit a letter yesterday, and I will give it to the clerk for the record that expresses the views of the Noank Zoning Commission. And with that, the only other comment I'd offer is off-script, but I can't help but have been impressed and concerned by the residents of Branford Manor. I hope every resource of the town and alleged light health district is being brought to bear to fix that problem. Everybody deserves to have a safe home environment for their kids and themselves, and that made me realize my issue is kind of a small one. Thank you.
Marshall Parsons, followed by Michael Wall.
My name is Marshall Parsons, 124 Brandy Street in Groton City. I'm here to represent our story, my story, my wife's story about short-term rentals. She runs it. It's her family, you know, women-owned business. She's been running for a couple of years now. I've gone to speak on her behalf because she has, this is her place of employment. She's able to volunteer at youth camps and run a youth camp all summer long, taking care of hundreds of kids and making sure that they have an experience on the outdoors. So I'm going to read what she's given me to, to, on her behalf. But prior to that, I'm going to say that several points. We've had 64% occupancy at our house. We live upstairs. The downstairs is a fully private place. That means 233 times evenings has been rented out with families out of 365 days. Our house is tax assessed, $100,000 increase since the last, the last time it was assessed. There have been no known COVID instances with any of our guests saying reported COVID. She's had 111 reviews, and she's a 5.0 super host. Excellent woman, very proud of her. So this is our, this is her story. Let me put some glasses on here. I was encouraged by a third party to check the agenda for tonight's meeting and see short-term rentals are on the agenda. I refuse to, she understands that there has been some media posts, several politically concerned citizens in the past city mayor election. She's aware of that as well. As owner of both the long-term and short-term rentals, that's what we have, we're concerned how this affect me, she says. I'm a five-star host to an Airbnb short-term rental in our area. I was very leery to start. I reviewed my options. After staying at a vacation rental in Colorado with the family, I'm thankful I did. Not only do I have full control of my own home, she has better control now than if we had a long-term rental in our home. Our home is better conditioned, better, better kept. We know what's down there than our long-term rentals. Not only do I have full control of my own home and my own agenda, because she can say I don't want to rent this weekend because I want to have our family care, you know, or block the weekend, et cetera. She has complete control of that. I'm able to give families a reasonable place, safe place to visit or vacation, especially now during COVID. I host many sub-school parents, Coast Guard families, businessmen and families. Right now, we have families staying from us from New York. It's a mother, husband, a wife, and two little girls. One's in second and third grade. They, they love being there. A hotel room, they'll never have what they have at our house. There's two bedrooms, there's a bathroom, washer and dryer, there's a dinette, kitchen, dishwasher, patio, they're having a campfire, a little fire pit out tonight. It's more convenient to be in a home than several hotel motel rooms for families with children or traveling with several generations to see the loved ones. The Airbnb platform takes care of everything for her, except for her calendar. I'm in complete control of my location, and they provide me additional insurance. I'm not sure what the problem is about pottering or constant turnover. Is there currently or historically been concerning complaints to the local government or police departments? We don't know. No one's complained at our house. Our neighbors know we do this on a regular basis. Is there a trend of complaints, if any? Or does this come down to some personal agendas? As a person who has a family all over the United States, I have the need, I've had the need overnight when I travel, after using vacation bedroom rental, being informed about Airbnb homes, a bed and breakfast in motels and hotels, I probably will seek an Airbnb host from now on as a priority, not to cheat out the local business owner, but because I enjoy the conversation, I enjoy the cleanliness, I enjoy the hospitality, I enjoy the environment. We welcome each guest personally. We make sure that they're okay. My wife checks with them multiple times throughout the day, weekend and the days to make sure that everything's fine. Other than the stay, what is the difference between short-term rental, seasonal rental, landlord, long-term rental, or full working families with several working teenagers that entertain friends and coworkers? What are their concerns? The Airbnb platform guidelines are pretty clear. No large gatherings. There are clear communication avenues for neighbors to communicate on the platform if they have complaints. I feel the guests are pretty well-scanned before booking my location. They have to scan in their licenses, they have to have reviews. We review them, they review us. So, you know, we know who they are before they even come here. My wife is bookings all the way through in December now. People wanted to come to our house because of the reviews.
Thank you. Time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town clerk. They'll be placed on the record.
I'll leave this with you, but.
Thank you.
Please go on the Airbnb website. You can log on, become a member, and you can see the reviews and see how happy the people are. You can see how happy the people are if you log on to Airbnb website, become a member, and how happy the families are.
Thank you. Next I have Michael Wall, followed by Stephanie Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Michael Noel. I live at 100 William Street in Noank. The Noank Zoning Commission spent the last two years figuring out if and how short-term rentals should be regulated, and I think the town could learn a lot from what they've done. After lots of hard work and public input, it was decided to simply enforce the current zoning regulations, which do, which do not list short-term rentals as an acceptable use. Short-term rental owners operated illegally and were told to stop the unlawful activity of operating a business in a residential zone. The entire town of Groton should do the same. People buying homes to operate short-term rentals not only drives up the price of homes, but has drastically reduced the supply of long-term rentals. You've heard many people speak in favor of short-term rentals recently. These are the people that, who have a lot to lose financially. You don't hear from everyone who may be impacted directly by short-term rentals in the future. Wait until you have an obnoxious out-of-towners crashing at your next-door neighbor's house, as I did. New people every few days, car doors slamming at all hours, car alarms being set and going off day and night. Wouldn't it be nice to have real neighbors? Do the right thing, enforce the current laws, and don't allow short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Stephanie Kerr, followed by Jeff Kerr.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kerr, and I live at 6 Ashby Street in Mystic. I am one of the leaders of the Groton Homes, Not Hotels group. Please visit our website, grotonhomes.hotels.com. I'd like to share my concerns on short-term rentals and urge the council to reject the adoption of the ordinance at the next meeting, as we found out this evening. While staff and others present this proposal as merely a registration system for STRs, it is clear the intent is to authorize the use and development of STRs in transient lodging establishments throughout family neighborhoods and residential districts of Groton. According to the 2020 U.S. Census, Groton is home to more than 38,000 people comprising over 16,000 households. This change in law would allow what is estimated as less than 0.01% of property owners the opportunity to continue to develop commercial enterprises in our treasured neighborhoods. This raises the question, why are we letting this 0.01%, many of whom are non-residents and investment firms, have the ultimate say in shaping our neighborhoods and our town's future? Why should their voice carry a greater value than everyone else's? We must learn from history and not repeat the same mistakes. There are countless examples of small historical or formerly cozy beach towns who allow the short-term rental industry to be unregulated, ultimately destroying their local community. My hometown of the Isle of Palms, a barrier island off the coast of Charleston, South Carolina, is one of those on those on the list. When the naval base closed in the early 90s, Charleston rebranded itself as a tourist destination to create more jobs. Unfortunately, the influx of investors building second homes and short-term rentals ended up driving the locals further out of town, such that those who did have a job in Charleston could not afford to live there. Over the span of 15 years, I witnessed my hometown turn into one with monolithic box homes, hosting rotating home estate cars every week. Additionally, property prices and taxes went up and drove out all the permanent residents. Whenever I go back to Charleston, I hardly recognize it. It's a caricature of its former self, having its natural charm sucked away by greedy investors, the modern-day pillagers or war profiteers of their time. They leech off the hard-working local communities until there is nothing left and the town is no longer recognizable. Over the last few months, right out of the STR playbook, we've been sold by the proponents all the benefits of their presence in the, for the Groton community. I challenge supporters to answer this. How do STRs truly benefit actual residents? Here is what I have heard. We've been told they always respond when a neighbor calls about an issue with one of their short-term rentals. How does the resident can compensate it for managing their property for them? Will the STR owner reciprocate and answer a call to extend their neighbor the same courtesy if they needed help with their property? We've also been told you can't choose your neighbors, by some who don't even live in Groton, by the way. What exactly does it mean when you choose to buy a property and live in a residential zone? Does that mean you are choosing to have, interact with neighbors by living in a commercial zone and being surrounded by businesses? We want to keep Groton's charm by banning short-term rentals. Please vote no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have Jeff Kerr, followed by Heather Pallardi.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for your time. First of all, glad to hear that this ordinance, the voting on this ordinance was, was tabled, but I also want to speak in opposition to the ordinance as it's written right now and encourage everybody here in the town council to work collaboratively with, collaboratively with the Planning and Zoning Commission as our town charter directs you to with regards to town zoning and land use issues. So big reasons why we, I think this, this ordinance is flawed. First, ordinance authorizes the use and development of STRs and other commercial transient lodging establishments in residential zones without any input from the Planning and Zoning Commission. In other words, it doesn't end run around the PZC, as others have already stated tonight. It's basically a special carve-out that favors a very small percentage of property owners in the town of Groton, many of whom are not even residents in the town of Groton or voters, for that matter. The PZC is already working with the Horstley-Witten Group to address this issue in conjunction with already established town zoning regulations that clearly state that commercial transient lodging, AKA short-term rentals, as, as you have defined them, are not a permitted use of property in a residential zone. There's also no fiscal or budget impact statement of these regulations to assess their cost to the town, nor is there an effective guarantee that the zoning official will actually enforce this ordinance. So I want to anchor down on the cost implication of this because I know at the Council of the Hall meeting in July, it was mentioned a lot about fear of legal ramifications from those who are small term, small STR operators if, if they're not allowed under, in the, in the town of Groton. So in short, the most fiscally responsible thing to do for the town council is to put this ordinance on pause and work with the PZC collaboratively to find a sustainable solution. In the state of Connecticut, as a general rule, the cost of town ordinances are borne by the town, town itself. On the flip side, zoning regulations concerning land use issues are typically refunded by the state of Connecticut's government. So if the town council votes yes on this bill, then the council is opening up the taxpayers of the town of Groton to any regulatory measures that were never fully understood or assessed with a fiscal or budget impact statement in the first place when this was voted and adopted at the Council of the Hall meeting. As a reminder, the cost will be borne by all taxpayers for the benefit of a very small percentage of those who are operating these commercial properties. Additionally, this ordinance was rushed through a couple of weeks ago due to, well, it seemed to be fears of legal costs to the town of Groton from those who operate STRs. Seems to presuppose that the, that only the commercial operators of these properties will pursue legal action against the town. It also assumes that residents of the town who must endure living next door to STRs will not pursue legal action if this ordinance is passed. Do you honestly believe this to be the case? My neighbors and I definitely, will definitely stand for, will not stand for hotels that are in our family neighborhoods, and I know that there are several other streets that feel the same way close by. If the PZC implements regulations on STRs, then any cost of enforcement or legal action against the town will be reimbursed by the state of Connecticut rather than the town of Groton itself. This provides the benefit of adhering to the town's charter with respect to the PZC, waiting to hear what the subject matter experts have to say, while enacting zoning regulations in a fiscally responsible way. In other words, leveraging the PZC and its process provides a safeguard against high costs that could have a very negative material effect on our town and its taxpayers. Thank you again. Please vote no, and appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next I have Heather Pallardi, followed by Scott Hurley.
Hi, how are you today? Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here. My name is Heather Pallardi. I live at 137 Cormorant Road. I also want to mention that I am in support of the Complete Streets, as well as rectifying the Branford Manor issues that are going on there. I know you're not here to listen to when my neighbor moved in. Actually, before even they signed the lease, were bothering me at 11:00 p.m., asking, taking my dog out while I was taking him out, if I had seen a package, or if I stole it, or what was going on. Or the fact that shortly after they moved in, the kids were littering in my yard, running through my yard, trying to back out of my driveway, running through my yard while I'm trying to back out of my driveway and I can't see them. After that, continuously hitting my car with a basketball. The basketball's coming into my yard, going through my carport. They're constantly in my yard. After all that had happened, and I complained to the management company from where I live, I was forced to deal with harassment from more than 1,800 lumens of light shining at my carport into my kitchen, through my windows and upstairs in my bedroom, all night long into the morning hours, when the sun was actually shining. And this is every single night, all night long, into the day. Should anyone have to live like that? I know I'm not the only one who suffers from this problem. In fact, Kelly Poulsen has been to several meetings here for the town, and she is still not seeing any resolution. We would like to know what is happening to rectify this. As you know, there are many problems that stem from excessive artificial light outside of normal light hours. We've sent you the documents. We've sent you the links. You have all the information at your fingertips. I actually sent out a checklist asking if you suffer from any of these problems on the list. And if you do, chances are you are suffering from light trespass and light pollution as well, or maybe your loved ones. I want to echo the sentiments from the Complete Streets as far as the Ledzly Health District goes and health issues in general. Depression, anxiety, sleep deprivation, fatigue, headaches, stressed, reduced melatonin, breast cancer, obesity, heart disease, high blood pressure, and ADHD. Is everyone a decent human being? If everyone was a decent human being, we wouldn't have laws to begin with. There's a group that formed back in the 1980s. The group MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have the strict laws in force now for drunk drivers. Should this be any different from someone who is suffering from a nuisance problem or an invasion of privacy? What these have in common are basic human rights. Light pollution and light trespass also affects flora and fauna. LED lighting has disrupted the aquatic ecosystem, breakdown of organic matter, which can result in algae blooms. The turtles have trouble finding their nest after they lay them. And as a matter of fact, four sea turtles that are in Connecticut are listed on the endangered, threatened, and special concern species lists. Fireflies rely on bioluminescent cues to find mates, and some insects use polarized light to find bodies of water where they breed, and reflections from outdoor fixtures confuse their sense of direction. Not only should there be light trespass and light pollution ordinance, there should also probably be a noise ordinance. I'm not even sure why there's not even a law here for that. It just seems as though you want to blanket everything under a nuisance law, but the problem is the police don't do anything to enforce that. I have called them multiple times on my neighbors after I was directed to call them by the town clerk's office, in which they did nothing. So, I am not allowed, am I not allowed to enjoy my home, my yard? Or do I have to suffer all night long, even to the morning hours, with more than 1,800 lumens of light shining at me, at my home, in my home, on my property? I really don't understand why something is not being done about this. We have started a petition and still haven't heard anything from the town about what they're going to do to rectify this light trespass and light pollution in our town. Kelly has been here for several meetings to try and rectify this. If you're interested in signing my petition, please see me after. I have it back there. I just, you know, Connecticut State has their own ordinance on light pollution, and that happened almost 10 years ago. But we're still not doing anything about it locally, and there's nothing that the police can do to stop it. And it's really a nuisance, and it's part of the nuisance, like, blanketed law, but there's no law for noise or light pollution or trespass. The fact is, really, people are not decent human beings. We need you to help us, to help them know when they need to be decent human beings, I guess. So, thank you for your time. I have a couple pictures here. I sent it last night in the email, but they're pictures of my carport when the light is shining at me and actually, you know, a reference when it's off and it's actually peaceful. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're about halfway through our list, so I think we have a couple people online, so we'll switch that briefly. Is there a Kelly Poulsen online? I think. All right, we see her there. She's just muted now. You have the floor.
Kelly Poulsen, 111 Lowerwood Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and town council members. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinance. Respectfully request enforcement of unrelated people living in a two-bedroom, single-family home. My house and property have been flooded with light trespass from my neighbor's house for over a year and a half, over five years, counting the people that lived there before then. My house, 1:00 o'clock in the morning. The other neighbor across the street from me has a large LED flag, meaning multiple strands of LED lights, either on 24/7. Two more guys have moved in across the street, and a third is there multiple nights a week. This brings the count to 10 people with an 11, multiple nights a week. This is a commercial house in a residential neighborhood with 11 people living in a two-bedroom house, with the owner charging rent to every single one of them, and they're getting away with it. They have continued to escalate, they are continuing to push the boundaries, and continuing to bully. This is my home, this is my property, and my safety. Who is and who isn't allowed on my property is solely my decision. It is my property and my safety. On July 15th, four houses of people, most of them guys, about seven of them, were all yelling and egging each other on to get closer and closer to my property. Two guys were in a vehicle, and instead of parking in the five-spot on 113's property, where they generally park, they were all yelling, "No, park over there, get right up to her rock." "No, get closer." "All right, way to go, keep it up, I'm proud of you." "No, closer still, you're not close enough." They got right up to the top, they got up, said the tires were right along the edge of my property. And I said, "Do not trespass on my property. Do not open the passenger door and step out onto my property." They continued to yell at the neighborhood and bully me. I called the police because they were continuing to escalate. This is my property and my safety. My neighbor came over, and with my neighbor as a witness, the officer and the lieutenant continued to bully me. They did not come out to help. They did not come out to ensure my safety. They came out to bully and belittle and try and make me stop calling the police. This is my safety with escalating bullying neighbors. Who is allowed on my property and who isn't is solely my decision, not this male lieutenant's. On Friday, I turned around in my front yard to see 113's pit mix on my property coming right towards me. The pit mix was completely loose with no visible tags and no 113 residents in sight. I was trying to get the dog off my property while I was marking everywhere. When I did finally get it off my property, it stood in the middle of the road, and a red car couldn't get by. I had two guys working on my house that witnessed it all. Animal control was closed, so I called the police and asked dispatch to send an officer to 113 and tell him to keep his dog off my property and to not let his dog run loose in the neighborhood. The very same officer that was at my house on July 15th came out. Of course, he did not go to 113 as asked, instead came over to my property to give me a hard time. "Do you have proof?" I said, "I have two witnesses standing right here." "You said somebody was trespassing." I told dispatch a pit mix was trespassing on my property. "When?" "When I called over to dispatch." "Of course you don't believe me." He continued to do everything he could not to go over and talk to 113. "Are you sure it was his dog? How do you know it was his dog?" "Because he locked it behind his gate." After he finally did talk to 113, I saw him step up the street and tell the other bully all about it, which would further escalates the problems. The officer and the lieutenant I am referring to are absolutely not the wonderful Officer Boudreaux, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, and Lieutenant Minor, or the absolutely amazing Lorena. Many towns in Connecticut have light trespass and light pollution ordinances that state lights need to be shielded and are not to be seen above ground level. Floodlights are not allowed. This is my home and my property. I have every right to enjoy my property without them trespassing. They are aggressively flooding my home with light, is a commercial business too, and they are escalating. Respectfully request residential light trespass ordinances, like many towns in Connecticut already have. Respectfully request enforcement of zoning's limiting amount of unrelated people living in a two-bedroom, single-family home. Respectfully request for certain Groton police officers to stop bullying me. Thank you for your time, and I hope you have a really wonderful night. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Tom Bradham online? Mayor DeBert, is there a Tom Bradham?
One second, please.
Yep.
Being recorded. He is on.
Thank you. Mr. Bradham, you have the floor. You are muted currently. He's still muted.
That's on, he's on.
Okay, Mr. Bradham, if you can hear me, you're muted. We cannot hear you.
How's this?
There you go. You have the floor.
There you go. Great. Thanks, guys. Good evening. My name is Tom Bradham, and I live at 7 Gravel Street in Mystic. I have lived in Groton since the 1980s and have lived in downtown Mystic the last 12 years or so. I'm sorry I'm not able to be there in person with you tonight, but I am recovering from surgery. I want to speak to you tonight about your plans to adopt an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals. As some of you know, I participated in the original short-term rental work group formed by the last town council that included Councillor Bordelain and former councillor Granatoski. I can assure you that this work group would never have forwarded this very poorly researched and drafted ordinance to the council for approval. At the only public hearing on this ordinance back in November 2021, the residents of Groton vehemently spoke against the adoption of this ordinance. I can speak for many more of the five minutes of my allowed time detailing all the legal, financial, policy, and troublesome aspects of this ordinance. You have already heard all this tonight, so I will spare you and others. What I will do is urge you to vote no on this ordinance, probably next month. Please wait for the Planning and Zoning Commission to finish its work with the Horstley-Witten Group consultants to develop appropriate amendments to the zoning regulations. After all, this is why the town is spending $25,000 for this consultant. Those regulations will, of course, go to a public hearing before adoption. If adopted, the town council can then wrap those zoning amendments into a comprehensive public policy ordinance that effectively serves the needs of all residents of Groton. I am asking the town council to collaborate with its PZC, its town staff, its residents, simply to do the right thing. This doesn't have to be a divisive issue. Be positive, be leaders, work for the residents and voters of Groton. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Mayor DeBert?
No, Roseanne Katuski had texted that she wanted to speak, but I do not see her yet. If she shows up later, I'll let you know.
Thank you. So, move back to in-person. Next on my list, I have Scott Hurley, followed by Katie Jones.
Mayor Melendez, councillors, thank you for your service. And I want to thank Town Manager Burt for being very responsive to my questions and inquiries to get up to speed with what was going on with this. And I'm here tonight to express some observations. There's things going on in my neighborhood. Also, some comments. I was here last month and took in the discussion, which was helpful to understand kind of where the council was with this matter. But before I do that, I just want to say that our family has resided at 13 Sharon Road in Mystic, a block off of Fishtown Road near the new Magnet School that used to be called Cutler Middle School. And we're on the corner of Rhonda Drive and Sharon Road. That subdivision was built for families. Many kids have grown up in that neighborhood since the 60s. Sharon and Rhonda were the daughters of the man who developed that neighborhood at that time. And I'm pointing this out is that I'm advocating that you have a generational view of what plans are going to be made for the future, because even within our family right now, you know, we have a third-generation footprint, our granddaughter, that spends a lot of time with us. She doesn't live in Groton, but she lives nearby. My wife's family have many members that have grown up in New London County and here in Groton. My wife graduated from Fitch High School. Son, daughter, both sons and daughters graduated from Fitch High School. There's a legacy of vested interest, and I was happy to see tonight, as you were recognizing some of the youth groups and the activities that are going on, that's what this community should be. You know, our son, there's a councillor here tonight who, whose son played Little League with my son, and had the opportunity to represent Mystic, Connecticut, and go all the way to the sectional finals of the, probably a couple of games away from playing on ESPN. And so, that's a legacy here. My oldest son played on the Fitch High School state championship football team in 1999. Our daughter, who worked a summer job as a lifeguard at the Mystic Community Center, saved a person's life. This is vested interest. I'm advocating that a generational, in a longer view, be considered for what Mystic is going to look like in the next generation, not just what's going on lately. I happen to hear, I jotted down a couple of comments from last meeting I just want to bring up. The comment was made that if we set up some type of registration process, that would help us to inform us, you know, as an authority body here in Groton, to know what to do in the future. I don't agree with that. The Planning and Zoning Commission needs to weigh in and look at best practices, look at what's going on, not reinvent the wheel and not be subject to the influences of interests that are outside of our community. And with that, the interests outside of my neighborhood now, I found out this past winter that the house across the street from me, my wife and I were very close to those neighbors for many years, went through a lot of their trials and tribulations with their family, as good neighbors do, is now owned by three gentlemen from somewhere up in Massachusetts. And every weekend, we have new visitors renting that property. We've dealt with being the parking lot attendants. We've dealt with being the parking lot attendants because when park, when six or seven or eight people are staying there and there's six cars outside, the places they park, I can't get out of my driveway. And my wife spoke to one of the gentlemen that was staying there about asking politely to move the car and was treated very, very rudely. Now, so this is just the beginning of what's happening. I don't want to think about what it's going to look like in the future. But again, I'm here to advocate that we take a longer view. We consider that good zoning practices, planning and zoning practices, there's a place for commerce and there's a place where commerce shouldn't be. And it shouldn't be in neighborhoods. So thank you for your attention. And as you can probably tell, I'm not advocating that we pass a zoning ordinance that permits short-term rentals in neighborhoods where they don't belong. They need to be put where commerce should be taking place.
Thank you.
Mayor Melendez, Roseanne Katuski is on now. She was under a different name.
Okay. She can have the floor now.
Okay, I'm promoting her.
She's muted. She's muted now.
That's on her end.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much. Roseanne Katuski, 24 Ann Avenue, Mystic. I have some comments regarding a few of the agenda items for tonight. First, the ordinance for tax abatement for spouses of emergency workers. Please vote no. The taxpayers cannot handle another tax increase. That is what this would be for every taxpayer in town except one. Remember, when a tax abatement provides a taxpayer with special treatment to avoid paying taxes, the rest of the taxpayers have to pay that person's taxes. A tax abatement for one person or business is a tax increase for everyone else. The ordinance regarding the short-term rentals. I know I'm not going to be popular, but I support the ordinance. If I were fortunate enough to be a snowbird and able to leave Connecticut in the winter, I would want to have control over my property. Balancing individual property rights and zoning regulations and/or town ordinance is tricky at best. From what I know at this time regarding the ordinance, this may be the compromise. But I definitely would not trust the Planning Department or their consultant pals, Horstley-Witten, to write the ordinance or implement it. I just found out tonight that the town is paying Horstley-Witten a staggering $25,000 to write the regulations. Why can't town staff write regulations or an ordinance? Unfortunately, in order to regulate these new rules, what do you think will happen? More town staff, of course. Short-term rental regulations should start with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Fortunately, it appears they will be looking at the issue. But I do understand that a lot of people here are worried about large corporations buying single-family dwellings. So am I. I am also worried about the fact that we are not building any single-family dwellings in town. Recently, the town manager stated that there were seven new single-family housing starts last year. That is unfortunate. Which leads to an important question. What kind of town do we want to be? Do we want to be a town of four- and five-story apartment buildings? Or do we want to be a town of apartments and single-family dwellings? Who is going to decide? Hopefully, the residents. I would like to see a combination of single-family and apartment-dwelling housing starts in Groton. I do not agree with the Planning Department premise that we need to expand the town. Where and when did the Planning Department come up with the live-work-play policy that they have the town pursuing? Did the town council provide guidance to them? If so, please direct me to the public meeting that this was discussed. Or did the Planning Department come up with it? I do not agree with the Planning Department that every electric vote employee should live in Groton. That's a Planning Department talking point that no one asked the residents.
It's hard to say I hate it. Then, but bigger is not better. Also on the agenda tonight is supposed to move $384,463 from the road ordinance money left in the general fund to the $84,500,000 school project. Please vote no. The voters approved the road ordinance years ago with specific details. Why is there so much money left in the road ordinance line item? Either one of two things happened.
Either the town over budgeted or the priorities in the ordinance as presented to the voters were actually not priorities, since they have not been completed in over a decade. Also, the voters approved an astonishing $84,500,000 to consolidate schools to save money. Of course, no money was saved and the board of ed budget has only gone up. If now we're adding $384,463 to the total cost, bringing it to a staggering $84,884,463, that money was not approved by the voters. This item should go back to the voters. Last, tax abatement supplemental program. Please vote no. Same comments as previously stated. The taxpayers cannot handle another tax increase. A tax abatement for one person or business is a tax increase for everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online? Mayor Robert?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list I have Katie Jones, followed by Hope Hespler.
Good evening to the community, to the town council, and to the mayor. I live at 12 Rhonda Drive in Mystic and it's quite fortuitous that I'm following Mr. Hurley as an in-person speaker because he is my neighbor on the other side of the Airbnb which has established itself in between our homes. So obviously, I am here to address the topic of the proposed STR ordinance. There we go. Early this year, an out-of-state investment group purchased the house next door to us and currently rents it out through Airbnb several times a week. Its listing names a corporation, not a person, as its host. Let me be clear, I am not in favor of banning STRs outright in Groton. I know several responsible local hosts who either live on-site or within town. They have, as my other neighbor says, skin in the game as residents of Groton and an interest therefore in remaining conscientious members of our community. Nor am I against these responsible local hosts supporting themselves with the income generated from their STRs. I am against selling Groton to the highest bidder as outside investment groups snatch up homes from a rapidly dwindling stock of affordable houses. I have shared my views regarding STRs publicly twice before and my comments as well as those of my husband, Kenan Jones, are part of the public record. This is my first chance to address the council directly and I welcome the opportunity to do so. We have lived in our home for 17 years. We know our neighbors. We know their children's names. We know their dogs' names. We swap vegetables from each other's gardens. We borrow each other's tools. When we lost electricity for two weeks during Hurricane Irene, my husband somehow managed to power our fridge with a battery inverter. The very first thing he did was to go across the street to our diabetic neighbor and offer to keep his insulin cold. That is a neighborhood. That is a community. And what I see quickly slipping away as outside investors purchase more and more properties in Groton's residential areas, including the home next to ours. The loud music and the swearing from this parade of strangers has broken the peace of our neighborhood and has prevented us from enjoying our own backyard. This STR is well within earshot of the many children who live at our end of the street. Like us, I'm sure their parents never imagined there would be a hotel a couple of doors down or in our case, about 50 yards outside of my back kitchen door. My husband isn't present this evening because we are hesitant to leave our 12-year-old son alone for a few hours when we don't know who our next batch of hotel guests will be. As I drive through my neighborhood now and I see a for-sale sign on a lawn, my first thought is no longer, oh, I wonder who's moving in. It's, please, don't let it be another Airbnb. It has come to that. Please don't let it be another Airbnb. I have very deep roots in this community. I grew up in Legerd. I live in Mystic for the past 25 years. I have worked in downtown Mystic for nearly 30 years and I substitute teach at the elementary school around the corner from me on Fishtown Road. I'm a vocal advocate for supporting small business in town and I'm one of the sadly few stubborn locals who are still willing to brave the ever-growing throngs to shop in downtown Mystic. And therein lies a big part of the STR dilemma. Groton's economy relies heavily on tourism in Mystic. This is both our blessing and our curse. We live in a beautiful town and people love to visit. It seems to me that up until three or four years ago, right around the time STRs really started taking off in town, we were able to strike a balance between accommodating the tourists during the summer season and maintaining the feel of our small town. Tourist season is year-round now. And this has shifted that balance to something that is quickly becoming unsustainable. I understand the temptation to invest in STR properties. My true investment in Groton, however, is not monetary. Which leads me to ask the council. What is your real investment in Groton? Is it unfettered economic growth? Or is it the overall good of our community? The current effort of the council majority to rush the proposed STR ordinance without input from the Planning and Zoning Commission leads me to infer that it is the former and not the latter that is driving their decision. As it stands, this ordinance proposes requiring a registration system for STRs and very little else, which will only serve to legitimize the operation of transient lodging in residential areas by outside investment groups. As a Groton voter and taxpayer, I am truly baffled by the majority council's unwillingness to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission on what is so clearly a zoning issue. Council members, is it in the best interest of your constituents to stymie the expertise of the PZC? Please, I urge you most respectfully, communicate with them, respect their work, vote no on this ordinance until the commission can decide the legality of short-term rentals in Groton. Then collaborate with them to draft a proposal which will serve our town's best interest.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
To do otherwise, we'll allow the continued disintegration of our town's residential neighborhoods. Thank you. I have a copy that I would like added to the public record. I did not make additional.
No, that's perfectly fine. Everybody will get it, including you.
Thank you. Hope Hespler, followed by Tyler Hespler.
Hello. Hope Hespler, 29 Route 27 in Mystic. I'm here tonight to again speak on short-term rentals in Groton and Mystic. As a short-term rental owner, I'm in favor of no regulation. However, I understand that's not the direction we're moving towards. I understand as town council, this is very a hard decision. Who's to say what is right or wrong? Who's to say my neighbor's property rights are more important than mine? And who's to say my neighbor can run an art studio out of their house, but I can't host guests in mine? Personally, I think no one should have rights over what we do in our properties. I'm concerned for how long this has been proceeding. Not just since I've been involved, but in the prior years as well. And what I've learned in this process so far is truthfully, you'll never make both sides happy. While I support the current ordinance that was drafted in October of last year, I know many of the opposition will not. And they will continue to fight for what they think is right. And if you were to ban short-term rentals, we would do the same. Please keep in mind that a ban or an overregulation of short-term rentals means you're not just taking away a place for people to stay or reducing the number of people who can visit our town, the number-one tourist destination in Connecticut. You're firing me from my job. I would have to lay off all three of my cleaners who depend on me. You're making me cancel my weekly maintenance staff as well. I'd no longer need it. Now, I apologize if any of this seems repetitive, but I'm trying to make the point that this is bigger than someone not liking that they don't know who their neighbor is. We've heard those in opposition speak about No Ink in Legerd and other towns that have banned short-term rentals and they say do what they have done, but we say those towns are not Mystic. However, No Ink residents are confused if there's even an ordinance in place that is enforceable. And on August 11th, there'll be a hearing in Legerd and the short-term rental owners will be requesting the town to change their decision and allow short-term rentals with reasonable regulations in place. This is not over for those other towns that put harsh and unreasonable ordinances in place. Thank you, town council, for your time in this matter. I hope that we can put this to rest soon and you can move forward with topics that truly are affecting citizens in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Tyler Hespler, followed by Ed McCauser.
Good evening. Tyler Hespler, 29 Route 27 in Mystic. I want to start the conversation. The question, and that is, what are we doing here regarding short-term rentals? It seems that STR has been a topic of conversation for many months and this ordinance has been drafted since last October. I sat through several meetings, including this one, where there's been far bigger issues than short-term rentals. We just sat through all these issues in Branford Manor where people can't even breathe. You just heard Kelly talk about how she can't sleep at night because there's no light ordinance. And speaking of the light ordinance and the light issues, I unfortunately can no longer say I've never had a complaint with my short-term rental. A couple of weeks ago, I had to cut down. I spent $3,000 cutting down a dead branch to one of my trees because I didn't want it to fall on somebody. With that branch missing, it's shed a lot of light on my neighbor's house. It was a neighbor who I met years ago when I gave her my number and told her I was doing short-term rentals. She texted me. Haven't heard from her in years. She texted me and said, hey, first of all, no issue with your tenants, but I don't like this light. So I went over there three days later, the next vacancy. I shuffled the way the light was hitting her house. I turned the brightness down and she texted me back to thank you for your speedy response and that was it. And that's how these things should be handled and that's how these things are handled. I actually wanted to ask the council, would the questions have been answered? Has that issue with the light been resolved? It doesn't sound like it has. I also wanted to ask, is her neighbor a short-term owner, rental owner? And it doesn't sound like she is or that owner is. Even further, I'm hoping at this point, we can look past the smoke screen that's being spread about short-term rentals. And I'm hoping at this point, you can realize that they're not as big of an issue as people are claiming them to be. The first photo on this page is from the website, Groton Homes Not Hotels. It's 8 Pearl Street in Groton, Connecticut. That is the best photo they have on their website. It's the only photo they have on their website. It's a picture in broad daylight. It's got seven cars in the driveway. It's a house. It's 2,400 square feet. It has five bedrooms. It's broad daylight. It looks like there's middle-aged people having a picnic on their patio. Since when has that been illegal? The way they're talking about these things, you make it out to be like these things, there's party houses, there's fireworks, there's traffic. If anything, this is helping with the parking issue. It's got adequate parking for over seven cars. Again, what are we doing here? What is the issue when you have people who can't even breathe in their apartments and you have people who can't even sleep at night? I'd like the town manager to follow up on their investigation into short-term rental citations. I know we talked about that a little bit last meeting. I actually talked to a police officer months ago and asking if there was any link between short-term rental citations at all. This person's response to me was a lot of his calls come from drunk people walking back from the bars or loud motorcycles, neither of which are short-term rental issues. He actually told me and I told Planning and Zoning at that time, as well as everybody who was in front of that meeting, you can go to the police record website, you can get a citation history for any property you request. And I've asked for one citation and until this date, until now, there hasn't been a single citation that we've seen. No photo, no video, no citation, no nothing. And it's the same thing. And it's the same thing they're talking about, these corporations buying these properties. We're all over here, we come to these meetings every single month. We're not corporations, we're not out-of-state, we live here, we work here. There's a massive stigma, and I'm hoping at this point we can start to see through that. And lastly, the second page, that's a screenshot of the abilities Airbnb allows us to use. It's important that you can actually see a screenshot from Airbnb because a lot of people talk about it. But these are things we use, and this is why there has not been a single issue. Right? Can't see that, there's one issue with the light, right? But other than that, there's been no issues because we have these systems in place, we take advantage of these capabilities. We don't want the noise, we don't want the trees, these are our houses, right? We don't want these people who are going to trash our places. And you can see, no smoking, quiet hours, no events, parking limits, fees for late checkouts and garbage, government IDs required, no prior bad reviews. We rate these people too, they know they're getting publicly reviewed, they don't want to jeopardize that. Pre-written messages they have to respond to. So in that way, every single house can be unique in their own set of rules. There are already systems in place for this. There's breach of peace, there's creating a public disturbance. There's citations that get issued when there's issues that happen with these properties. Why is it any different with a short-term rental? We are not the bad guys here, and I'm hoping you can start to see that. To conclude, it's very unfortunate that everyone has spent this much time on this ordinance. There's clearly much more important issues going on. I'm in favor of the ordinance as it's written. I only hope that there's nothing that gets amended in the future that would negatively impact short-term rental owners. I think of your time, I just want to address the fact that, I know Stephanie had mentioned that she had asked a question to short-term rental owners. For the record, I gave my card months ago. I told her to call me, I never heard from her. I actually talked to people in her group that wanted to meet.
Are you allowed to respond? I didn't think you were allowed to.
Your time has expired.
Well, just for the record, I actually, people from her group that wanted to meet with me said they were pressured not to. There's been open invitations since day one.
Thank you, time has expired. I have Ed McCausher, followed by Ian Thomas.
Did you see that she just put me on? Good evening, my name is Edward McCausher, I live at 40.
One second.
Okay.
I ask that people present, please do not speak. We have people here who waited all month and for many hours to speak, and I just ask that you respect that, please. You have the floor.
Thank you. Again, my name is Edward McCausher, I live at 48 West Eldican Avenue. I happen to be an attorney as well, and I'm here representing some residents of Groton with respect to the proposed ordinance for short-term rentals. I think you got, I did email a letter pointing out some problems with the ordinance as enacted and some of the language. I now understand from, you know, what you've told us, it's not going to be voted on tonight. And I'd be curious to see what changes may be made. For instance, one of the problems was that the ordinance was not published in a newspaper as required by the charter. There was just a title. The other is that it's very difficult to tell, you know, when it just confines it to the town as the area covered, whether it applies to Cedar Groton or Groton Long Point. And apparently, it's intended to apply to NOINC, which I think is a big mistake. But be that as it may, I did want to address some other issues with it. One of the things that I heard at the last meeting was that this issue had been worked on for a long time by the council, and I know it's been on the agenda as an agenda item since 2020. However, this particular ordinance, as far as I can tell, was drafted after the request of the council by our staff, and it was presented at the September 14th meeting last year. And it was then scheduled for a public hearing. The language was not altered from what was presented to the council then. It wasn't actually in the record of the hearing or the minutes of any of the meetings. But that same language, which was the very first draft presented to the council then, you know, was the subject of your vote last week, and is the same language that you're now, you're not going to be voting on it tonight, but was in your agenda package, which I, you know, find rather incredible that there was no change, there was no workshopping of the ordinance. But beyond that, I also, I believe that you're really not, you know, you have a lot of matters that you require your attention. And there have been ordinances passed by some municipalities addressing short-term rentals, but I think it's not a good idea for land use issues to be presented to a council and something I think that maybe is not typically in their expertise. It really should be, and was, a subject that the Planning and Zoning Commission has been examining. And, you know, again, you know, this statement that, "Well, we've been working on this a long time." Again, it only came up in September, and it seems like there's some kind of haste, I don't know why. But the same language, which is very permissive, I mean, it basically says in it, "We want to have short-term rentals of all kinds in the town of Groton." I cited that in my letter. And it has no limitations, really. It has some requirements for trash, but it's very, you know, it's just basically a registration. It's throwing the doors open to short-term rentals. And the reason that this is concerning, you don't have to look far to find examples of towns that have had a great deal of trouble with short-term rentals in many different ways, but commonly in disturbing neighborhoods, in disrupting neighborhoods, in eliminating properties out of the housing stock. I mean, I've got things that I, you know, you know, first of all, we have a single-family home inventory problem in this area. That's been in the newspaper. I mean, that should be, everybody should be aware of that. There was recently a report that homes are deemed unaffordable in most US counties. We already have a tremendous amount of pressure on the cost of housing and the stock of housing. Now, you know, in Connecticut, I just found a case in Reading, they're having a meeting this month on short-term rentals. They, I believe, had an ordinance, and they wanted licensing, and apparently, they got, you know, 212 rentals, but that's up from 90 in 2015, this is a growing problem. And then, in fact, they hired a company to find out exactly how many there were. And it turned out, there's more than, there's 300 of them in Reading. So they're having an emergency meeting to try to figure out how to handle this. You know, we have neighborhoods that I think, you know, you represent our community, you represent our neighborhoods, and you should not be on the side of exploiting them, you should be protecting them. And that's what I'm urging you to do. I think you should get out of this business of trying to regulate them. Leave it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You know, there's many other examples of, like New York, they have thousands of unapproved short-term rentals in vacation areas because of short-term rentals, or because of the squeeze on housing. They don't have housing for the people that work seasonally or even work in their communities. And as one speaker mentioned earlier, one of our restaurateurs, Angela Canavas, there was a story about the difficulty of finding housing for her workers. We have a tourist area, and we should not be eliminating housing, you know, that will, I think, end up being unavailable to people that would work here. This is going to affect our businesses. So this is really a serious problem.
Time has expired.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarifying question.
For who?
For the speaker.
Yeah, we're not going to be doing that at this time. That should be handled in response to citizen petitions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Ian Thomas, followed by Alfred Frichy.
Tall people in this town. Ian Thomas, 24 Jefferson Drive, and I'm here to speak on two issues primarily. First and foremost, I'm glad to hear the town council and the town attorney has decided to pause and take a public hearing on the STR ordinance. I believe that is proper, I would recommend going one step further. And as many others have mentioned tonight, it's a land use issue primarily. I think Planning and Zoning should take the lead on that, and then the ordinance can come from the town council to follow and fill in wherever gaps and concerns may result. After P and Z, in fact, I would go even another step further and say, I think the town council and the Planning and Zoning Commission should get together and kind of work collaboratively in a big workshop session. It's not unheard of, and at this point, I think it's the best way to go forward, so everyone can kind of stay in their lane. And also, to that end, the STR ordinance that's on the books, that was on the docket, is insufficient. As many councilors have noted in previous meeting from July 12th, that, you know, that it was already insufficient in its current draft. Many have already noted that. And the town attorney and the planning director, John Reiner, also noted that it could be amended, adjusted over time. And I said, "Why pass something that's not done yet?" In the RTM, we just recently vetoed an ordinance that came to us, and a large part of the body was speaking about how insufficiently detailed it was, or there's questions about this, questions about that, and it got vetoed. So, I mean, if we're staring down the barrel of another situation like that, this ordinance would still have to come to the RTM. And, you know, I think a similar result may occur. So, again, work with the Planning and Zoning, please. My main issue here is Branford Manor. I have tried to be patient and persistent in speaking with the municipalities at play here and trying to represent the interests of the constituents that live there. Long story short, Related Affordable is moving too slow and inconsistently in erratic motions and are not serving the residents there very well at all. They're displacing them, you know, off to hotels without much accommodations as far as like living, working, like cooking services and whatnot. On top of that, it's disrupting their day-to-day lives with their children. And I'm also hearing some stories about residents coming back into the apartment and finding still air quality issues have not been resolved. So I'm here simply to say this, is that the city and the town of Groton need to work together and use every bit of leverage at your disposal in the tax abatement agreement to compel Related Affordable to push for, to create a 100% comprehensive survey and assessment of every single unit in every single building in Branford Manor, and then develop a remediation plan for every single unit in every single building. They got $55 million as part of this tax abatement deal and credits to rehab that place in 2017. 18.5 was supposed to go into real costs to actual infrastructure of the building. 37 million was supposed to go to some administrative costs, I don't even know what that means. But I suggest you look into it and find out where the documentation is, because I've been asking the town manager, been asking the city mayor, and I'm not getting good answers, right? I can't see the accounting of where all this money went. It went somewhere, that's our money. And it was supposed to help them. It didn't, still not. So, there's a mechanism within the tax abatement. I was at the city council meeting last night, and I heard one councillor ask the mayor, "What leverage can we apply?" And another councillor asked the mayor, "Maybe we can set up a firm timeline." And I'm, it was already after public comment, so I couldn't respond, but I wanted to jump up and scream, "Default." Default, default, default. That is the mechanism in your tax abatement agreement that can compel Related Affordable. What happens is a big meeting between all the principal players, and you guys come up with a negotiated timeline. You should know, because we have a situation with Resplur, right? Like, that's still ongoing, that's a whole mediation process. So you can set up a timeline with Related Affordable with benchmarks, and you also need independent verification of the work that's being done. It's not being done well, it's not being done comprehensively, and it's not being done respectfully for the residents that live there. It needs to be a comprehensive plan that goes L-Plex by L-Plex, clears one out, gets it all set up, and rotate people through so the residents don't have to leave the premises, they don't have to break up the community. It's an interconnected community there, right? They depend on each other.
Thank you, time has expired.
Please. Thank you.
I have next Alfred Frichy, followed by Ken Siegel.
I'm sitting here for so long. Does this work? I'm not good at this, so I'm just going to tell.
Speak close to it.
I'm not a very good speaker, so I just want to make some points that, I sent you a letter, did you get that? Okay, good. I'm feeling right now like the town management and the town council aren't really recognizing the combined effect on the lives of the town's people because of, number one, a revaluation that, you know, just disturbingly raised all the values to a high level, and that shifted a great burden of the tax onto residents versus commercial, because commercial didn't go up. At the same time, then, we get hit with STRs, with short-term rentals, being an issue. And you wonder if it's part of what's driving the housing prices up that have resulted in the grand list, you know, impact that we saw. Some $676 million, I think I calculated, was the increase in the residential, and most of the increase for the whole grand list, and that shifted a lot. So, if you can't feel that, then you're not going to sense that maybe we need to do something different, to think differently about it. Because it's just not worth it. We could, and we've been told, we could, the town council could, take the revaluation and decide whether to use it or not. Now, it was an anomaly where we had extremely low interest rates for the two-years' worth of data they used, and we had the COVID exodus out of the cities coming looking for work at home places outside of town. And all of a sudden, the prices went up, and I actually talked to realtors, and they said, very often, it was just two out-of-town people fighting with each other, running up the price to try and, you know, get a house. Whereas the local people certainly aren't making the kinds of money to justify the prices being paid. So we sold a few houses, and then we hit everybody with a big increase in their evaluation as a result. That shifted a lot of tax burden over. The budget wasn't the problem, really. We had, you know, some APR money used for capital, but overall, the budget was pretty modest compared to what it might likely be in years ahead as the inflation, wages, and costs, and everything else is going to hit hard on our town, and we're going to have to raise taxes. So, I want, what I'd like to really see you do is referendum, to ask the town's people to vote on the issue of short-term rentals, and to ask the town council to try and address the problems that were created by the reevaluation done during a period of an extraordinary time that I don't think we've ever seen, where we had COVID for two years, and we had people moving out of the cities and all the other things going on that made that data not a valid, a valid indication of where the values of houses have gone. These houses are selling for very overpriced amounts, but only, but that hasn't happened to us before. So what, does that make sense? So what, does that make sense, that we then sit and push that on to everybody and make them adjust, my taxes went up 12%? I'm not, I'm not the highest by far. There's some people that went up a lot more. I know somebody with a small house went up 25%. It, this, that should never happen. It doesn't need to happen, especially when all of the data that you used was based on a very distorted term of our economic life over the last three years. So I'd like to see the town council actually get involved in the program as to whether this valuation is correct, and even if you have to abandon it, abandon it until you can get a good number that makes sense, number one. I'd love to see you do a referendum on short-term rentals, because I'm going to be honest with you, people, this is a community. We have a shortage of housing. We have people that were trying to get to work at Electric Boat. They cannot, you know, where are they going to live? Even in London, some of the prices have gone way up. What I'm saying is, we need to start thinking sort of how the people are thinking, and then you might say, maybe we should redirect to think about whether these things are legitimate or not. And a referendum might help you a great deal in doing that. Right now, we come to these meetings, we speak, and, but the people who come have a specific interest. It doesn't necessarily affect everybody's opinion, really, and yet I can assure you that everybody has an opinion, you know, whether it's on taxes or anything else. This does educate. It educates me beyond the RTM, listen to the council, and things like that. But I also want to say, the council needs to be educated by more than the strong opinions that come here. And I think referendums really are almost necessary.
Thank you.
Okay?
Next, I have Ken Siegel, followed by Stephen Stolman. Ken Siegel. All right, let's skip ahead. Stephen Stolman, followed by Kristen Distanti. Not seeing a Stephen Stolman. All right, Kristen Distanti, followed by Paul Bead.
Hi, everybody. Thank you again for your service, and I know you guys are being inundated on all sides for opinions on this issue, and it's a sensitive issue for everybody. You know, we all live here, we all love it here. And I'm urging you to find some kind of middle ground. I know there's the voices that say it should be banned completely, there shouldn't be any. There's other voices that say, oh, they should be completely unregulated. It's all my rights, and I think we have to find some kind of reasonable middle ground in between. You know, I don't think big corporations and hedge funds and groups like that should be managing, you know, residential properties in our town. I think that we have to, we have to, we have to thread and needle, and it's not going to be easy, but that's, that's the task. I just want everybody to think about Mystic. The word that comes after Mystic is seaport. You know, Mystic Seaport. What is a seaport? A seaport is a place where strangers come and go, and strangers are welcomed. If you're not welcoming strangers, you're not a seaport. The whole heritage and history of this community is to welcome strangers. I personally like strangers. Like, my best friend used to be a stranger. I have dear friends in this room who used to be strangers to me. I think of strangers as friends that I don't know yet. And honestly, you know, I do, I am an owner of short-term rentals, but I also have a neighbor who owns a short-term rental, and I enjoy meeting those people. I enjoy the little posse of, you know, four little middle-aged ladies who are lost and can't figure out which way downtown is. I enjoy the little families that come in that are, you know, a lot of families out of Manhattan, where the kids never have a chance just to run in the grass. So I like the idea. But no, do I think every house should be a short-term rental? Absolutely not. We have to have some kind of limit, some kind of cap, some kind of boundary while still allowing some to go on. You know, who's coming into town right now is a lot staying in short-term rentals. It's a lot of millennials. Look what's happening downtown. And just in case anybody didn't notice, today, The New York Times ran a big article in the Culinary section called, they're calling it the Culinary Corridor. It features Mystic. It features Shipwright's daughter, Sift, Oyster Club, Nanas. So it's coming. If we've been in a wave before, it's coming even more so. So, you know, do we want to shut down the tourism? I don't think so. I think, I think the tourism is part and parcel of what this community is. It's a fabulous place. I love to share it. And people do travel differently now. Myself, I'm planning a trip in the fall for my family. One or two nights, it's a hotel. Three to four or five nights, it's a short-term rental, so I can spend time with my family. It's a lot more affordable for families traveling. For example, you know, feeding, feeding children in a restaurant, you know, a family of four or six or whatever, three meals a day, it's, it's not sustainable for families visiting. So, you know, the fact that you can have breakfast at home, maybe have lunch, the babies can take a nap, it's good. And this is the God's truth. I was sitting with my husband in my backyard. Our neighbor has a short-term rental, and I said to him, I'm so glad that that property is a short-term rental. I really am, because it's literally the quietest, quietest house in the neighborhood. It's almost always empty. The people that are, go there, they might go downtown, they come back. They're very, very quiet, very respectful, as opposed to a recent 24-hour period where I live, where at about six, we have, I have one particular neighbor who likes to get his brush hog out, and he brush hogs from like 5:00 to 6:30 in a lot of evenings, you know, beautiful summer night, he's out with his brush hog. That same night, there was a huge, there was smoke all over the neighborhood. I'm like, what the hell? Is that my short-term rental with the bonfire? I ran over to see what it was. No, it was different neighbors, loud, drunk, people that live there permanently, who I've never met, but they were having a big bonfire in the neighborhood. And then at 6:30 a.m., a different neighbor had their lawnmower out. So these are the permanent neighbors that I can't get rid of. At least the short-term people, if they're annoying, they leave. Okay? So on my block, there's short-term rentals and long-term rentals, and a lot of residential homeowners. And I can tell you, the long-term rentals are rundown, shabby, lots of them are sitting empty. The short-term rentals are super spruced up, because, you know, every time I have a guest check out, they're reviewing me publicly. So I want everything to be really nice. I want them to be happy. I want them to come in, and everything's nice and good. So I rate them, they rate me, and if they rate badly, they're kicked off the platform. And just so you know, Airbnb recently officially made a policy of no parties allowed in their, in their rentals. So I think, you know, they're cognizant that this kind of movement's going on across the country, and they don't want to lose their business, so they're going to start to become more proactive about, you know, keeping everything nice for everybody. My opinion right now also is that, that right now, short-term rental, right now Mystic is explosively hot, and I think the short-term rentals are filling a gap. I think they're, they're picking up some of the slack of demand that we have, and when things cool off, which they inevitably will, that, some of that'll dry up, because if you're sitting there with a, with a property that's empty two or three months, four months out of the year, you're like, you know what? I can't afford it, I'm going to sell this, and I'm not going to do this anymore. Whereas if you, you know, if somebody comes in and builds another huge hotel complex, that's forever. You know, that's not going to revert back to housing. I mean, maybe it could, but. And I have ideas about, you know, we have homeless, we have displaced people from Branford. Maybe the town supports those people having a place to go where they actually can feed their children, and their kids can take a nap and play in the yard for short-term periods when there's need. So anyway, I think we need, a complete ban is not in the interest of this community economically or socially, nor is unfettered growth. Again, I think we need to thread that needle and find a way to limit reasonably, reasonably, and some way that actually can be enforced as well. I think we need short-term owner rentals here who live here and care, like I do, and I'm very attentive to my properties, versus, you know, the Wall Street funds, hotel chains, and Chinese corporations.
Thank you. Time's expired.
Anyway, please work with planning and zoning, plan to compromise, and I appreciate your efforts and communication. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Next, I have Paul Bead, followed by Dana Oriati.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time, for your service, and for your concern. You are all in the unenviable position to try to make different sets of rules for, for others that seem equitable and non-biased and non-prejudiced. But fair should be fair for all groups, and the rules should be, should apply to everyone. I hear, I hear arguments against home businesses, but it is not the accountant or lawyer or dog groomer or massage therapist that you're arguing against. It is also not the long-term landlord that is in question. It is only short-term rentals that seem to be targeted as illegal. So what is it then, really? Is it the noise? Is it the trash? Is it the parking? Because if you want to see all three of those, you'll come to my house with my three boys and their friends, and their loud noise, and their, and their antics. The rules for these should be the same for everyone. If you want a noise ordinance, make a noise ordinance for everyone. That includes the bars downtown. That's where most of the noise comes from. The same thing goes with the trash. But is the, is trash really the problem? I don't think so. And then there's the parking. Everyone talks about the parking. But the parking doesn't seem to be a problem overnight. You know, if it's a short-term rental issue, like those are people who are staying overnight, but overnight, there's parking spaces all over the place, all right? But just not during the day. That's where the parking problem seems to be. So let's talk about owner occupancy. So, oh, I'm sorry. So I'm Paul Bead, and I live at Sevenborough Street in Mystic, and I also have a short-term rental that is not in my home. Imagine yourself going away for a long romantic weekend, or better yet, a family reunion, and there you are with all your loved ones and me. All right? Because you felt that an owner-occupied situation would be best for all involved. But I don't want to be at your family reunion, just as much as you don't want me there. All right? I can be at my, at my rental in five minutes or less, all right? And we usually check it daily for watering plants, bi-weekly to make sure that the trash goes out properly, all right? And you have to ask yourself, what would you do if you went to a short-term rental? All right? Would you park on the neighbor's lawn? Would you exceed the occupancy? Would you leave your trash laying around? Would you throw a noisy party till all hours? All right? Would you be more likely to start the house on fire when you were cooking dinner? I don't think so. And it's people like you who do short-term rentals, all right? So there's a, there's a 1960s song by Dinah Washington, it's called "What a Difference a Day Makes." 24 hours separates a 29-day rental or a short-term rental from a long-term rental. The rules should be the same for both. You're not going to require a resident owner to be at a long-term rental. That sounds ridiculous. So it brings us back to the whole question of, is it the noise? Is it the trash? Is it the parking? Or is it perhaps the fear of not knowing who's next door? But it's you. You guys are the ones that are next door. But last line of that song, "What a Difference a Day Makes," well, the difference is you. Thank you for your time. Oh, and the one last thing that I would like to say is, it seems silly to argue about short-term rentals when, in Branford Manor, the, there's health issues going on, people's lives are at stake. I think that, that really is the priority. So whatever you guys can do in order to rectify that situation as quickly as possible, I would totally be in favor for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Dana.
Oviet.
Oviet?
Yep.
Followed by Lynn Marshall.
Dana Oviet, 68 Front Street. The town council is considering an ordinance that would regulate, essentially legalize, short-term rentals in Groton. The ordinance specifically exempts the city of Groton and Groton Long Point. It does not exempt the Noank Fires District, even though, as you already know, the Noank Zoning Commission decided months ago that short-term rental activity was not in the best interest of the Fire District, and essentially prohibited them. I ask that the town council acknowledge and respect Noank's determination regarding short-term rentals, and specifically exempt Noank from the proposed ordinance, as you have already done for Groton City and Groton Long Point. Now, as a member of the Noank Zoning Commission, let me say this. We worked on short-term rentals for two and a half years, studying what other municipalities were doing, talked with zoning commissions in other towns, consulted with agencies about how short-term rentals might be enforced, received hundreds of letters from, from the public, and spoke with our attorney on numerous occasions as we went through this process. We devoted at least 15 meetings specifically to discuss short-term rentals in addition to our normal monthly meetings. This sometimes meant meeting two and even three times a month. In short, we worked like hell on this issue. Perhaps I'm mistaken, but I fear that the council, what the council's done is essentially rubber-stamped a short-term rental ordinance that was created under a previous town council that, relatively speaking, hadn't given it much thought. This is not an issue that can be given just passing consideration. Short-term rentals can have profound social ramifications for a town. They can make or break a residential character of a neighborhood. I don't think you've done your due diligence with respect to this issue. So here's how you do your due diligence. Consult with the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. It's a serious mistake not to include planning and zoning in your deliberations, because this ordinance involves land issues, like off-street parking and garbage management, to say nothing that short-term rental is a commercial enterprise that this ordinance would allow in residential neighborhoods. This is not my opinion, it's just fact, short-term renting is big business. I have nothing but respect and admiration for all the members who sit on the town council. You are to be committed, commanded for your hard work. All I ask is that you make a decision that does the most benefit for the most amount of people, while at the same time, does the least amount of harm to the least amount of people. I think that by getting the Groton Planning and Towning, Zoning involved will, for this philosophy. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to have Lynn Marshall, followed by Michael Noel.
Good evening. I'm Lynn Marshall, living at 118 Pearl Street in Noank. I was a member of the Noank Zoning Commission for 10 years, more or less, and then came back on as an alternate. And I was an alternate during the period of time when, when the zoning regulations, when the short-term rental regulations were being considered. And Dana just said it really well, is the commission dug in and worked like hell, even as an alternate, who wasn't a voting member of that, I still felt that I wanted to give somewhat intelligent contribution to it. They did let us, the alternates, enter into the discussion with them on, on it. And, and to get up to speed, you know, I did a lot of reading, what other towns had done, and newspaper articles about FX, looked at lots of suggestions, documents for regulations, went to, went to over six, six or so workshops on best practices in different areas of best practices. I was wondering what, a lot of it were cities. I did talk to large cities like Boston and San Francisco, but I was also interested in how different small towns had, had implemented it, and what issues they had run into, what they would recommend. I talked to Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, Wilmington, North Carolina, Durango, Colorado, and Boulder, Colorado. So, I mean, we really, really dug in to understand it and to see if we could come up with short-term regulations that would work for all the people, including the short-term rental owners, in Noank. And so when I, when I, when I've heard the discussions on this issue by the town council, the depth of the knowledge is not there. And I unfortunately have to say the same thing about the staff, what I've heard them say. The Planning and Zoning Commission is going about this in a really good way. They've hired an expert who is, who's taking them through that in a very logical way. They already have a good background for it, and they're getting up to speed very quickly, and they're doing great work. So, you know, the fact they didn't even want to talk, you didn't want to meet with them just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. The fact that this affected Noank, that all of a sudden, we're included in it, and I didn't speak on this ordinance before, because of what, as a Noank, I wasn't, didn't directly affect me, but Noank wasn't consulted, not the Noank Zoning Commission, not the Executive Committee, and I think that's a big mistake. And the, the reason you give, that I've heard for why you're doing this, is that registration will tell you what is going on. That's not a good way to tell what's going on. I mean, you've got to wait for the people to come into the door and get registered. The way, if you want to know what's going on, you go to one of the, one of the monitoring companies. They're really good at doing this. They can give you a dynamic, real-time, who's coming in, who's coming out, what neighborhoods, give you the whole picture of it very quickly, keep it up to date for you. If you want to know what's going on, that's the way to do it. This, this... This document, this ordinance, is just not well-written. Plain and simple, it is not. And it does start out with a purpose. That's good. There are parts of the purpose that aren't really clear, by definition. And then you've got to have what you're doing, what the ordinance states, has to relate back to your purpose, and it does not. The definition of the purpose, it's problematic. "The desire of some property owners to rent their residential dwelling." That sounds like some homeowners want to rent out their home or an accessory dwelling unit in their home, and you could interpret it that way. But it doesn't really say that. It says property owners, any kind of property owners, and you can't differentiate by law one kind of property owner from another, to rent their residential dwelling. It's not, the residential dwelling means they own a residential dwelling, not that they live there. So this is wide open to corporations, and that's what you're saying. This is just fine to have that happen. If you want to have it be for the property owners themselves, homeowners, then you specify things like it be owner-occupied, or that it be their principal residence. Those are both strong ways to get what you might want. Talking about mitigate the disruption that it may have on neighboring properties in a neighborhood, well, it doesn't say anything about the fact that you don't have neighbors. And as other people have said, the fact that you're eliminating residential, long-term residential properties. What happened in Boulder, Colorado, was they started out with it open wide up, and then they had a crisis because they did not have rental property. But at that point, all of those were legal, and so they were grandfathered in. And from then on, they said, any new ones, it has to be your principal residence. That's easy in registration to establish. It was easy to enforce because the neighbors let them know if this wasn't being followed. And they were taken to court on it twice, and it was an easy win.
Thank you. Time is expired.
Yeah, all right. I could go through the rest of this, but I think the people have talked about the problems with this. But please, this is not ready. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Michael Noel next, but I believe we had Michael Noel speak previously, so we'll go to Bruce McDermott, followed by Linda Vogel.
Good evening. Bruce McDermott, 328 Noank Road. I've written you all emails, so you pretty much know where I stand. But on Noank Road, where I am, within 150 yards of me, I've got six short-term rentals. Two of them are owner-occupied, where the owner is the resident. And I have no problem with those because I have a neighbor that stays there. That's my whole point with this thing, really. Our neighborhood is being eviscerated with these things. We've got four of them where they're short-term rentals, and they're not terribly badly run. That's not the problem. It's just that they don't have neighbors anymore. They're gone. Either died or moved, a couple of guys have moved to Florida, things like that. And I just see it going even worse. If it's this bad now, what's it going to be like in five years? You know, we liked Mystic because it's charming. It won't be charming in five years. There won't be anything left of it. But my point is, and there's no comeback for this, there are no neighbors anymore once these short-term rentals take over. And that's what I want to see stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Linda Vogel, followed by Christina Tejada.
Hello. I'm sure you're all exhausted. Thank you very much. I do have copies of what I'm going to read, which I'll pass out afterwards. And I'll take my mask off so I can breathe. Okay. I've been here before. I've spoken. My concerns has well been expressed, not to ban STRs, but to really find a good, safe way to regulate them. So I'm really here tonight to speak about the ordinance. The first issue that I have is the language of this ordinance implies that short-term rentals are already a permitted use. Is it that the Groton Town Council has unilaterally decided that short-term rentals are permitted in Groton, despite the many arguments that have been expressed concerning short-term rentals? To my knowledge, short-term rentals are still not allowed under our current zoning rules. How can the council regulate an entity that is not yet permitted to exist? Issue two. It's my understanding that in 1956, the then-Groton Town Council formed a zoning commission and conferred upon it the authority to regulate, quote, "the use of buildings, structures, and the use of land," end quote, Town Charter Section 8.1.6. Why now, in 2022, has the Town Council taken upon itself the authority to regulate land or property use, which is, per our charter, the task of the Planning and Zoning Commission? Issue three. What this ordinance calls registration goes well beyond mere registration of STRs. It specifies rules regarding noise, number of guests per bedroom, on-site parking, et cetera. This ordinance, issue four. This ordinance clearly permits non-homeowner-occupied short-term rentals. It allows owners to, Section 4, Part C, quote, "It allows owners, when requested, the owner of the STR or the owner's agent, whose name appears on the STR registration, that person or entity shall be available to respond to any complaints. This does not necessitate home occupation." Section 4, Part D, quote, "The online lodging marketplace is not responsible for any violations committed by an online lodging operator that advertises on the online lodging marketplace platform," end quote. First of all, that is Section 4, Part D. I don't understand what that means, but it clearly states that it's not an owner, it's some kind of entity, and that they are not responsible. This ordinance seems to protect the online marketplace, whatever or whomever that is. Issue five. In Section 5D is a statement releasing the owners from liability. I quote, "Not, quote, 'Notwithstanding any provision of the ordinance, a short-term rental owner is not liable for any violation of the ordinance if the owner, one, has identified on the STR registry an online lodging operator, who will be responsible for complying with the requirements of the code, or, two, quote, 'has submitted to the town a signed agreement with an online lodging operator, who will be responsible for complying with the requirements of this ordinance.'" The online lodging operator will be liable for any violations. These statements, Section 4D, Section 5D, seem both confusing and contradictory. But in essence, they enable an owner of a short-term rental to not be present, to not occupy the residence, and to transfer management of the property to an outside person, company, entity, or whomever. Issue six. What agency will enforce these regulations? How will the, quote, "number of persons per beds in a unit" be determined? Who's going to go to check, to count? Who will be checking to see if all the renters' cars are parked on-site? And who is going to be contacting the online marketing manager? How would the town of Groton enforce any regulations if the, quote, "operator of the short-term rental is an out-of-town investor or a company like VRBO or Airbnb?" I've heard from the other short-term rental owners here, who are local residents, who are in their homes, and I really feel that some of what I'm saying does not apply to them. My concern is that this ordinance, as it's written, should not be voted on, or should be rejected. The Planning and Zoning Commission is currently working to amend zoning regulations to attend these very complex issues regarding short-term rentals. The Town Council should give the Planning and Zoning Commission time to study the issues and to make recommendations. I urge the Groton Town Council to vote no on this ordinance as it stands. It is premature. It has not involved the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the language of this ordinance could lead to many unintended consequences, which will be very difficult to undo. Thank you for this part of it. I do have to add my words, that I'm very concerned about the Branford Manor situation. I've been to several of these meetings. It seems to be an ongoing and deteriorating problem. If there's money that can be taken back from the management company of Branford Manor, it really has to be done. This is scandalous in our town. Thank you very much. I'm going to pass my letter out to you.
Thank you. Christina Tejada, followed by Felicita Ramos.
Hi. My name is Christina Tejada. I live at 194 Branford Avenue. The last time I came here to speak about the issues at Branford Manor was in June. Since then, I've been displaced from my home. I have three children, 14, 12, and six years old. All three are boys. They're very active. Where we live, we have grass. We moved here from the Bronx, from New York, lived in an apartment building. Now we live in a townhouse, sitting with grass, where they can play outside and actually have a childhood. Now we're living in a hotel. I've been in a hotel since July 8th. I was supposed to be leaving the 22nd. My stay got extended to the 1st, and today is the 2nd. It's been extended to the 15th. I have cameras that I purchased that are outside my door, front and back, and in my unit. Not once has anyone been in my apartment. We're going on a month. No one has started any work. No repairs have been done. The office is actually refusing to speak with me about anything with my apartment because I see counsel and I have a lawyer that's representing me. So they don't want to help us. They are basically putting us in hotels and forgetting about us. They think because they're paying the bill, that it's acceptable. My youngest was supposed to attend City Park and Rec Summer Camp this summer. He literally went three days, so I paid for no reason. Tomorrow, he'll be going on a trip. This is the ending of the summer camp trip. I made it my business to make sure that he's going. Why? Because his entire summer has been in a hotel. And we have a pool, okay? The pool's already, it's done. At this point, they're bored. My kids are active children. They're outside. My oldest son plays for a Fitch basketball team. He's been playing for AAU and for several teams since last year. He's literally confined to a hotel. My middle son, confined to a hotel. He's literally not sleeping. I don't know if you know, but living in mold and being exposed to it for a long period of time is skin irritation, rashes, itchy red eyes, runny, and stuffy nose, post-nasal drip, headaches, dizziness, asthmatic symptoms. I've been living in my apartment for four years. We have suffered from these symptoms every single day. This past school year, my kids have missed under 20 days of school. When I resided in the Bronx, they wouldn't even miss five days. This entire time I've lived in this apartment, I assumed it was the climate change, the environmental change. I went from living in pollution to living in an area full of grass. I assumed it was that. No, it's been my apartment that's been killing us. I entered the apartment to get clothing from time to time. I literally have a headache instantly. I thought this was normal, because I lived in it for four years. I thought all these conditions, all these issues that I had, these side effects, were normal. I thought it was because I was surrounded by grass, and no, that's not the case. It's my apartment. My apartment came up very high with mold that my kids are allergic to. My kids are allergic to penicillin. That was one of the molds. My kids are allergic to mold turiet. My air quality test came up with three elevated levels of mold on my second floor where we sleep. One in my living room floor, where my kitchen and dining room is, and two in my basement. This all started because they were closing basements. They were covering what was going on. They weren't trying to fix it. They were trying to cover it by sealing our basements. But not only basements are suffering, there's people that have no basements, and their crawl spaces are full of mold. The entire complex is mold. They're not handling it properly. They're not listening to us. They are just throwing us into hotels and forgetting about us. And when you call, they ignore. They have caller ID. I've been told, "Oh, we need you calling. We were having a meeting." They don't call me back. They don't give me an update. They don't tell me anything. This is my home. I want to go home. I want to be able to cook my kids a proper meal. I live in a hotel right now with a microwave, and that's how I'm feeding my children, in a microwave. I am used to feeding my kids breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and I'm feeding them out of a microwave. This is not normal. Mentally, for my children, I am in fear. This is not right. I'm still paying my rent. I lived eight days in July, and I paid my rent. This month, my rent was eight. And I'm literally living in a hotel with my three children and have no way of explaining to them when we're going home. Every day, they're asking me, "I want to go home. I want to play with my friends." I don't know when we're going home. They refuse to tell me. I know that this is an issue that we can get help, but we're being ignored, and I just ask everyone to please step in and help us. Because I'm just the beginning. There's 442 units. Everyone has to go to a hotel eventually. School's about to approach. I do not want my kids to get on the school bus at a hotel and be made fun of. I want them to be picked up at our home. This is not okay at all. And I just want someone to help and listen to us and actually help us, not just put us to the side and ignore it. We need help. The help from everyone, anyone that can help and listen and actually care. We need help. Thank you.
Felicita Ramos, followed by Genevieve Sur.
Hello. I'm Felicita Ramos. I live at 178 Branford Avenue, and I am also having issues with mold in my apartment. I was here back in June for public comment, and back then, I did speak about having a hole in my ceiling, in my dining room, which the toilet pipe is, like, you could see it over my dining room table. My kids can't eat at the table. They still haven't come to fix it, and it is now August. They came to do some repairs, but didn't do all of them. They started going into people's apartments without their permission. Some parents have their children there that are not 18, and they still tell us that they can still enter our apartment with our kids there. I have daughters. I do not need these maintenancemen in there with my kids. They told us about the notices to quit, that they weren't going to move forward with it. Me personally, I was one of those people that received the notice to quit for a 2018 rent that I didn't know I owed. I found out now in 2022 about it. And when I went and they sent me my ledger, it's off. They didn't say, they didn't put in the help that I got from Groton Social Services two years in a row. They have another tenant's name on there. I've asked them since June to look at it and fix it, and they said, "Oh, yeah, we're going to look at it. We're going to look at it." I just went the other day, and they still haven't fixed anything, and they're moving forward with notices to quit. The situation with basements, I basically got rid of almost all of my stuff from my basement. It had mold on it. A lot of the stuff was from my mom. She passed away three years ago. Those were personal belongings of hers, and it hurt me to throw all that stuff out. I also want to touch base on the tenants who are staying in hotels. I went with Christina to the office and spoke with Heather, who's, I guess, the regional manager for Related. They don't speak to us professionally. They are telling her because she has a lawyer that they cannot speak to her about whatever's going on in her apartment, even though the lawyer has told them that they have the right to speak with her and let her know what's going on. She's even gone as far as not knowing that they had extended her stay until she went to check out. Like, that's ridiculous. It shouldn't be that way. And I do feel for her as well, because it is embarrassing to have your kids start school living in a motel. This is just an ongoing thing, and we're just tired of it. We just want things to be fixed, and we want them to be professional with us. Treat us with respect. We speak to you guys with respect. It's just ridiculous. Right now, with the whole mold issue, I have some mold in my apartment as well. As soon as you enter my home, you could actually smell it. It's not visual, but it's there because we can smell it. My kids have constantly been sick, nonstop, for the last two months. Right now... Right now, my sister is taking my two youngest ones to the hospital, because I'm here to speak. They both have pink eye, they have fevers, and it's ridiculous. Why do we have to live in these conditions? It is frustrating. I'm also a part of the tenants' union, one of the leaders, because I feel for these people. Nobody is trying to really help us, you know, and it bothersome. I want to help these people, but I'm not in a position to help anybody, if I can't even help myself. But yeah, that's all I wanted to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve Surf, followed by Steve Jones.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Surf. I live at 6 Pearl Street in Mystic. I was watching a Noam Chomsky video. Probably nobody here even knows who that is, except my friend, Nancy. And they played, he's one of the great activists of our generation. I strongly recommend watching his videos on YouTube. And there was a bit in there, a quote from Walter Lippman, whom probably even Andre doesn't remember, but I'm sure Jim and Bunny know who that is, who was a great progressive writer. And he said, basically, I want to bring a quote, and I forgot to write it down, but basically, that we have the illusion of living in a democracy, because most of the time, what happens is the powerful are taking advantage of the weak and playing all kinds of games, doing that. So, you know, with this ordinance, I had an anxiety attack right when I got out of bed this morning, because there is so much wrong with what happened here that I didn't even know where to begin. I was thrashing. So I have a whole lot of small things I'm going to say, one of which is, under Section 1 Purpose, there's this wonderful phrase, "It is found," I really would like to know who it is that did the finding here. "It is found that all types of short-term rentals may be rented upon appropriate measures." And I stress the word "all" here. That means everyone who currently has a short-term rental is automatically legitimized by this ordinance, because the minute they come to the planning department, they pay their $100 or whatever to register, they will have been legitimized, which is something that the planning department has no right to do, and what you all have no right to do. Planning and zoning is supposed to legitimize what goes on in this town in terms of uses in the different neighborhoods. I will get back to the "all types" there. Dwelling unit, there's a whole Section 2 definitions, dwelling unit, offstream, blah, blah, blah. These definitions belong in the zoning regs. If they're not in the zoning regs, they have no business being defined in a town ordinance. You know, levying the fines, figuring out how you're going to enforce things, things like that do belong in the ordinance. So I'm not against having an ordinance, but I'm against having an ordinance that tries to supersede and marginalize what should be done by the Planning and Zoning Commission first. The first job is for planning and zoning to decide what is legally defined in their regs right now, and short-term rentals are not defined. Same thing as Noank. It wasn't in the Noank regs, and they decided if it wasn't in their regs, they weren't going to put it there after two years of deliberation. So you guys are absolutely letting the tail wag the dog, because planning and zoning, as many people have said, comes first. And the fact that you're trying to marginalize planning and zoning is really, like to me, a knife through my heart. I've been working with this commission for 22 years, and I can guarantee you that, to me, it's the lifeblood of our community. It's the lifeblood of every community in the country. If we don't go through our commissions and do what the state laws and all the laws tell us we should do, work through our commissions, we're basically nothing short of criminals. Now, okay, you're legitimizing here all types of short-term rentals. Next door to me, I've mentioned before, the house has been bought by a man named Emmanuel Koo from the Habakkuk Capital Group. Okay, this is Emmanuel Koo. I have eight articles. Actually, the research was done by Katie Pratt and, I think, another friend. I'm going to send you all these links, because you're going to need all these links. As Lynn Marshall said, she spent two years studying, looking what other towns are doing, what obstacles they ran into. Did we do that here? No. We just went ahead and wrote this really piece of, I don't want to be, you know, use a bad word, but this ordinance is ridiculous. All right, the man who lives next door to me, here's a notice from the Office of the Attorney General, William Tong, about investigating this man. Opens unfair and deceptive practices investigation into former landlord. Serves Emmanuel Koo with civil investigative demand, seeking information regarding derelict clay Arsenal Renaissance apartments that may constitute unfair or deceptive practices, et cetera, in violation of Connecticut law. This is a man who received millions of dollars of subsidies. Does that sound familiar? It's like Branford Manor on a larger scale. Okay, this is the guy who lives next door to me. This is the one who wants to buy more of homes in Groton. And here's another article from Hartford Card, I believe, that says, this is the best part, that he claims he's doing the work of the Lord, and one of his tenants showed up with her mouth-bitten child to show what the work of the Lord was. Not to have any disrespect with respect to the Lord, but why is it that we have this tendency to want to allow common criminals into our communities? And before I run out of time, I want to especially address Councilor Franco, because it kind of passed through the radar.
Thank you, your time has expired. Time has expired. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the clerk. They'll be put on the record.
Okay. It passed through the radar when John Goodrich mentioned it, the last council meeting.
Your time is up.
What?
Your time is up.
Time has expired. I'm sorry.
All right, but it passed through the radar that you're trying to replace, you're trying to replace the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission with people of your choosing, i.e. cronies, who will do what you say. And I really hold you personally responsible for this, because the others don't really know enough yet.
Ms. Surf, your time is up. If you have additional comments, you can submit them to the town clerk. They'll be put on the record.
If anybody wants proof of this, I'd be happy to give it, because I spoke to John Scott, who personally told me about it. And I really, Rachel, I really think that you ought to change your ways.
Thank you, your time's up. Next, I have Steve Jones, followed by Gina Wright.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. My name's Hanseena Wright. I live at 11 Cheeseborough Avenue. I've lived in the Noank Fire District most of my life. I'm a former Noank zoning commissioner, and I'm currently an alternate on the zoning commission. I was surprised to learn quite recently about this ordinance, proposed ordinance 2020-41 coming up so soon. And I was surprised to learn that the background section omitted the Noank Fire District as an exception. It was my understanding that, at least as far as a year ago, there were all indications that, as I said, I'm trying to summarize, because it's getting late for everyone. But in the day, on October 30th, 2021, the Groton Planning and Development Director, John Reiner, was interviewed regarding this proposal, and interviewed by a reporter, and was referred to in this way. Quote, "Reiner said the draft ordinance, as it is currently written, would not apply to Noank, Groton, Long Point, or the city of Groton." So it was with some surprise to learn that this had changed, and that there had been no communication to either, to my knowledge, to the zoning commission or the Executive Committee of Fire District. Groton, Long Point, the city of Groton, and the Noank Fire District are all in existence and legitimized by special acts, some going back to 1903, 1918, 1929. And in my letter that I've submitted, I've identified those briefly. Noank's zoning and adoption as a district recognized by the Special Assembly predates the town of Groton zoning, as does Groton, Long Point's. I would like to see that if this proposal continues to be considered, that this correction be made to include the Noank Fire District as an exemption. If it cannot make an exemption or an amendment, then I do request that the proposed ordinance be rejected. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mayor Joubert, do we have one more speaker online?
Yes, one moment, please.
All right.
We have Adam McGuire being transferred over.
Thank you. Adam McGuire, you have the floor. You're muted. We cannot hear you.
Can you ever now?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Yeah, my name's Adam McGuire. Live at 10 Pearl Street. Lived here since 2014. I live directly adjacent to the house that has been mentioned a few times, did April Street. Just a background, not this is really germane, but I'm 35 years old, so you get a millennials' perspective of what's going on here with me, so. Yeah, so 8 Pearl Street, disowned by Emmanuel Koo, which was previously stated. Someone who talked tonight also talked about the house. It's shown on Homes Not Hotels here, and commented that it didn't look that bad. Off to take some videos and show for the town councilors. It's hard to see in pictures, but there have been quite a few wishes of this house. So every Friday, when I drive home now, instead of kind of looking forward to the weekend and thinking, you know, how bad is this going to be this weekend when I get home? And nearly every weekend is bad now, but the house is really a party house. There's really a lack of complaints around here, because I have no ordinance to point to, to actually complain about. Don't have any noise ordinance around here, general bad behavior, and they can really call the cops and have them address it here, so. As you all know, the historic district, the houses are about five feet apart, so, you know, when we have bachelor parties here, which we do many weekends at April Street, they're playing beer pong, you know, feet away from my property line, yelling, "Senate is..." when they make every cup. And this, I'm out here with my family, I'm out here with my wife, I'm out here with my three-year-old son, and he's hearing every word out there. You know, we're just out there, we're so close on the property line that it's hard to ignore. And, you know, this is a reason Noank said no to these SDRs, since they are a problem. So this is an example. One weekend, I was out there, and there were about 15 people who were staying in the house, about 2,400 square feet. And, you know, the language was there, my son was right there, was out there with my wife and doing some gardening, and, you know, spoke up to them, said, hey, can you guys, you know, tone down the language? And one person actually came over to my property to confront me, because they'd just been sitting out there drinking all day, and was able to cool down the situation, thankfully. But this is what these people are there for. They're there to come, they're there to party, and they don't want to be told otherwise. And, you know, this is behavior that I came to expect, you know, when I was going to UConn for my degree, but not something I was expecting when I moved into the historic district in Mystic. And it's not something I've experienced. I've been living there since 2014. This is a relatively recent development that we now have to deal with. So this particular party also, they stayed at the house the entire weekend. All they did was sat there and drank, and that's pretty consistent, what you've been seeing there. So the arguments that, hey, we're seeing a lot of stimulated economic activity, they're going out to the restaurants, the bars, they're, you know, helping the economy here, I really doubt that, just based on what I've seen. And that's a single instance. I'm sure there are instances of they're actually contributing, but these are my observations. So I bought my house really here to live long term. There are fewer and fewer people who are living here since I moved in 2014. In terms of the person who talked earlier tonight about, you know, the generational ties they have here, looking forward thinking, that really resonated with me here. We really need to think about the long term. We really need to take it to heart. You know, my son here, I plan on living here long term. I want him to go through the school system. This is exactly the kind of, you know, person and family that we want going through our school system. But I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to keep living like this. I'm not going to keep, you know, coming home and wondering, you know, who's going to be living with me, or who's going to be living next door to me on the weekend. I'm just not going to deal with it, and I don't think I should have to deal with it. So, you know, we've talked a lot about it tonight, you know, this Branford Manor, that is an incredibly high priority that needs to be, you know, for this town council. But in the same vein, this is an extremely important issue, I'll say, the SDR issue, just looking forward thinking for the landscape of the town, and it really just needs to be addressed, and it can't be minimized. It's an important issue, and thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Bird, is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
I have no one else.
Okay, so I've reached the end of my list. Is there anyone who is present who wishes to speak at this time that hasn't already spoken? Okay, I'm seeing none, so we will close the receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns.
Can we take a break?
Take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 9:47. Take a five-minute break, we'll be back at 9:47.
Take a look back behind. Recording in progress.
We are out of recess at nine fifty-seven. Okay. Since so close to ten o'clock anyway, I'll just ask the council for consensus to continue. Is there consensus to continue?
I'm definitely in favor of continuing.
Okay, so that's consensus to continue. Since it is so late, however, I'll follow past president and skip all items that do not require action. So we're going to skip past agenda item number six. Onto agenda item number seven. I make a motion to...
Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's only fair that if people had questions, I know councillor Casiri had raised her...
Councillor Borlon. I made a decision to skip past number six.
May I finish what I would like to say, and then you can tell me your...
Councillor Borlon. We are going on to the consent calendar.
But, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation...
I make a motion to move the consent calendar consisting of July fifth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
I don't think it's fair that you're passing our ability to ask questions.
Second, Casiri.
Councillor Borlon, you are on.
I could be out of order. I think you're also out of order, and I think it's unfair to allow us to speak. Thank you.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Casiri.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
People are speaking that don't have the floor and been recognized by the chair.
Okay, so we are on the consent calendar. Does anybody have discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Abstentions. That carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. We will move past communications and reports. As they are not actionable. We will move past committee reports. Onto new business. First item of business. We will not be acting on as, that is the opinion of our town attorney. I will be skipping past that. Onto supplemental appropriation for FYE...
Mr. Mayor? It would be appropriate, it's an agenda item, I think any council, it would allow us to discuss.
Councillor Borlon.
Can I say my piece?
No. I am the chair of the meeting. I am skipping past all the agenda items that are inactionable tonight. We have to get through the agenda. We are moving on to supplemental appropriation for FYE twenty twenty-three.
It would be appropriate, though, that we discuss all the findings and at least have the mayor, the town manager, report why we're not voting on this tonight and what were the new findings. I mean, this is an agenda item, and we should discuss it. And I think it's just not serving our community well to just bypass it. I have notes here and questions I would like to address, and this is the time to do such. We had a large turnout, and this is an agenda item. So even though we're not going to act on it, we should be able to speak to it. We need more time on this item, and tonight could be that time.
Thank you for that. I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the general fund, unassigned fund balance to debt service. Whereas the FYE twenty twenty-three budget included estimates for debt service for the April twenty twenty-two bond and note sale for the Groton twenty twenty school facilities project. And whereas due to unprecedented inflation and expected Federal Reserve interest rate increases, the actual debt service for FYE twenty twenty-three is higher than the adopted budget amount. Be it resolved that three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars is appropriated from the general fund unassigned fund balance to the debt service function one zero seven six for additional principal and interest payments due in FYE twenty twenty-three and refer to the RTM for approval. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Jones. Sorry, Parker. Councillor Jones beat you just there. Any discussion? Councillor Borlon?
I just wonder if the town manager could speak to this item.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear that. I heard town manager.
Oh, that's okay. Usually people can hear me. So just wondered if you could speak to this agenda item.
Sure. Again, this is... When we actually went out for the bond sale, ended up being a higher interest rate than expected, so we're in need of three hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-three to pay for the additional principal and interest due this year, FYE twenty-three.
Thank you for that. I think at the last meeting when this came up, you know, I had talked about forecasting, and it seems in this town that we don't do a great job of forecasting. And when we had our budget, it was not even considered for a higher number. We went with whatever the number was from before. And I had stated that it would be really important to kind of be fiscally responsible and making sure that we, as a town, are looking at these numbers and not doing large transfers in this capacity this late in the year. What's our plan moving forward to try to minimize this?
I think we said we would look, discuss it further during budget time. No, we do have a professional financial advisor who advises us on these things. So this is a really rare occasion for something like this to happen.
Right, but there's numbers and ways that we could have forecasted with the rise of everything else and, you know, do our due diligence on this. I do think it's important that, you know, we are planning and as we see these numbers changing, that we're reporting more frequently. And I just think that we can do better as a town to collaborate on this and definitely propose better numbers in the future. So I do encourage that in the next budget year that we work a little harder to make sure we're closing and predicting all financial increases and gaps in a timely manner. Because there are things that councillors might not have voted on if they knew that this large amount of money was going to be transferred. I know that might have changed my vote on a few items, but here it is, late, way after. So I just think we need to be more fiscally responsible.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't, I don't agree with fiscally responsible in terms of our financial advisor did try to account for the changes. There's nothing, the only other thing we could do is put in more and then we would pay, you know, you're going to sell them. I mean, there's really very little way to avoid this. There really isn't. Unless we just want to upfront throw in some extra general fund dollars just in case. That's what... In terms of forecasting, we're not going to try to outguess the financial advisor. He's been doing this for twenty-something years.
That's, that's fine. Just because it's been done for twenty years doesn't make it indestructible.
We're not going to be...
May I finish?
No, but we're not going to outguess them.
May I, may I finish? Thank you. I did look at other towns in different ways. You know, because it's unknown, we can ask our financial, we're paying them to do a job. We can ask for, you know, a two percent increase or one percent predictability to see what the market may do so we're more prepared. And we could adequately, you know, predict. We don't have to take one number. So because it's been done for twenty years, I'm asking that we really look at that and find a way to do a little bit better with our foreshadowing. Thank you.
And just, you know, Cindy and I, we do speak with the advisor along the way about those type of things. They, you know, they felt pretty comfortable with it, so...
Councillor McBride?
Yeah, just to add some commentary on that. I, I understand your point, Portia, but I think there's also, we need to understand the timing of how the bond proceeds work and that there's, you know, there's a four to six week timeframe where you go out and you have to put your bond booklets together and you go out and you issue them, and things do change. And I'm, I know, you know, there's many different models that they have, and as John states, they get the financial advisor who gives the best recommendation with, with percentage swings. But at that point in time, that's the advisor's best estimate of what it will be. And I think what happened here was, if I recall correctly, this was after the Russia's invasion of Ukraine, which the markets went a little nuts, because I know in London we had some issues there as well. So I understand your point about forecasting, but things do change after your booklet is bound, and you can't change the par principle. So it, it does happen. So I understand how, how this situation did arise, because it was an extreme situation in the market.
Thank you. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Abstentions. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto reallocation of excess bond proceeds. Groton twenty twenty plan. I make a motion to recommend a resolution reallocating bond proceeds from the road maintenance and rehabilitation project to the Groton twenty twenty school facilities improvement plan. Whereas the town of Groton authorized eleven million two hundred thousand dollars general purpose bonds for the road maintenance and rehabilitation project pursuant to ordinance number two seventy-seven. And whereas three million seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars principal amount of such bonds were sold as part of eight million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of general obligation bonds issued of twenty fourteen lot A. Six million six hundred and ninety thousand dollars principal amount of such bonds were sold as general obligation bonds issued of twenty eighteen. Seven hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents in bond proceeds were reallocated to road maintenance and rehabilitation project from the design and reconstruction of Thane Street project pursuant to ordinance number two seven five. And interest income on such bond proceeds was received in the amount of eighty-four thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. And whereas the road maintenance and rehabilitation project has been completed and there remain unexpended bond proceeds in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And whereas the excess of bond proceeds from the road maintenance and rehabilitation project can be applied to the Groton twenty twenty school facilities improvement plan project authorized pursuant to ordinance number two eight four as amended and thereby reduce the amount of bonds needed to be issued for the Groton twenty twenty school facilities improvement plan project. Therefore, be it resolved that the town manager and director of finance are authorized to apply such excess bond proceeds in such amounts as they shall determine are available from ordinance number two seventy-seven to the Groton twenty twenty school facilities improvement plan project authorized pursuant to ordinance number two eight four as amended. So moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melinda, seconded by Casiri.
This does not have to go to RTM, correct?
Most likely, yes.
You think it does?
Andrew Burke, does this have to go to the RTM?
It does. The last one also.
Okay. And refer to the RTM, so moved.
Second, Borlon.
Okay. Moved by Melinda, seconded by Borlon. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got a question.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I can read the next one if you'd like.
Thank you.
For twenty twenty dash four thirty-two tax abatement for seniors and disabled, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution creating a local tax abatement as a supplemental program to the existing circuit breaker program. Whereas some older and disabled residents of the town of Groton face very serious financial hardships that may leave them unable to pay their real estate property taxes. And whereas Connecticut law, Connecticut general statutes twelve dash one seven AA is in Alpha Alpha to hyphen CC is in Charlie Charlie requires, requires the town of Groton to participate in a state tax relief program, commonly called the circuit breaker program, to aid these residents. And whereas Connecticut general statutes twelve dash one seven AA to CC sets an upper limit on tax relief of a thousand dollars for a single person and twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a married couple. And whereas the town council formed the property tax abatement study committee to review the need for further aid, along with financial impacts. And whereas the property tax abatement study committee's final report indicated that if the town council desired to increase aid, that they recommend the town council consider allowing up to an additional fifty percent of tax relief benefit, where this local option benefit would be addition to any existing circuit breaker program, tax benefit to which the applicant has already qualified for. And whereas the recommended program would be authorized by Connecticut general statutes twelve dash one twenty-nine N as of November as a new program to act as an addition to the town's circuit breaker program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town council approves a local option tax relief program pursuant to Connecticut general statutes twelve dash one twenty-nine N, which is in addition to the state of Connecticut's circuit breaker program, thereby increasing the allowable maximum tax abatement for single taxpayers to fifteen hundred dollars and to eighteen seventy-five for married taxpayers, subject to all other parameters, limits, and requirements of the circuit breaker program and Connecticut general statutes twelve dash one twenty-nine N being followed. I so moved.
Second, Jones.
Again.
Doesn't this have to be referred also? I thought you said it did.
And refer to the RTM.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Jones.
This, this actually does not go to the RTM.
No.
And take away, referring to the RTM.
I rescind my second. Second, second.
Okay, Councillor Borlon.
Uh, thank you. My question's for the town manager. Do you feel this needs to go to a public hearing?
I'm comfortable with it, and we didn't, I might feel differently if we received many comments through public comment, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with it, and I think it's rushed. And as we heard tonight about other folks speaking just on other items, we had our first read at our last meeting that we reviewed this, and we did not offer a public comment. So just because a few people haven't spoke about it yet doesn't mean that there's not work to be done. I don't feel comfortable. I think there should be something done, but I do not think there's this pressing time restraint that we're under to necessarily have to move on this tonight, as we skipped many other agenda items that were of great importance tonight to discuss, that people came before us and spoke. And as we stand here, there's things that should be on the agenda that aren't, like Brantford and many other things. And I, I just don't think this is the council's urgency at this moment. I think it would look better to the community. If you guys, you know, my favorite part of the meeting is the public comment, and I've asked very openly on many occasions that we, we've moved to have two of them so we can get the work done. But when we box people out, in my opinion, and not allow for that deliberation if no one shows up or not, we...
Point of order.
We allow for...
Sorry, what's your point of order?
Boxing people out is considered motivation and intent, and it cannot speak for me or any other councillors and our, and any kind of motivation on what we're doing.
Okay. I believe Councillor Borlon's in order.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
You have the floor.
Thank you for that.
You have the, Councillor Borlon, you have the floor.
So again, as I state, in my opinion, I speak for myself, by not allowing public hearing, as people spoke tonight, they feel that their voices are not being heard. And having a proper deliberation, I could vote in favor of this, but I want to open it up. We may not have anybody show up. We, I think we should post it in the newspaper. There are things like this that are major changes, as people stated, it will affect their taxes, and therefore we should be honoring that time. There's no urgency or deadline. Is there, Town Manager? That's my question. Town Manager?
Begin. Say that again.
Is there any urgency with this?
There's no set prescribed timeline.
Correct, so nothing will change if we bring this up in two or three months, say?
Process is entirely up to the council.
I'm asking you, if we brought it up in two months, it doesn't change any of it, correct?
A little subjective. I mean, things could change. The more we talk about it, certainly, there's nothing timeline, nothing affected timeline-wise.
And if we wanted to have a public hearing, when could we have that?
Depends on what route you take to approving it. You could do, you know, you could fast track and have one the next month, or you, the regular way would be two months from now.
Point of information?
Councillor Borlon, do you yield the floor?
No, I'm still going.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you. So what type of motion to the town manager would I have to make to ask that this be, have a public hearing?
Let me think on that for a minute.
Sure.
I think it...
I think you'd refer it back to the Cow first.
That would be the motion I'd have to do?
Because you, yeah, you can't really just jump into, at the resolution stage to create the public hearing. You could send it back to Cow unless you want to override rules.
All right, so I'll make a motion then?
Wait, hold on, just one second. I have to figure out what's going on here. We had a, we had a, this happened last term, where it was the discussion on whether sending a motion, sending an item back to Cow or a committee was the same as a motion to reconsider. So if it's, if that is a motion to reconsider, then there's...
That is true. You are correct. I didn't think about that.
Okay, is that what we decided, that sending something back to Cow was the same as a motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Okay, so then we would have to, Councillor Borlon, you would have to have been in the prevailing side of this vote in order to do that.
Okay, that's fair. So with that, I will not be supporting this tonight. I'll abstain or vote down, I guess. Not solely because of the content in this information, but again, as we heard tonight over and over and over again on many things before us, as we try to rush ordinances and paperwork through that have no timestamp, there's no way that I can support something without it properly vetted and oversighted in a way that would reflect our community. If the council, I encourage someone on that side to reconsider this, send it back, and let's slow down. We heard it twice tonight. Slow down. Let's work together. Let's get people around the table and act as a unified front that's elected by the government and the body of the people. That is why we're here, to do the work of the people, and that's what we should be doing. And so therefore, I will abstain or vote down, and I encourage councillors to send this back to the Cow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Westerveld.
I make a motion to return this to the Cow.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion to reconsider by Councillor Westerveld and a second by Councillor Borlon.
Councillor Westerveld was in the prevailing side?
Yes.
You voted in favor of this?
Yes.
Point of information?
I have a motion by Councillor Westerveld and a second by Councillor Borlon. The second does not have to be in the prevailing side. Motion to reconsider. Discussion should be pertaining only...
Point of information.
Someone who voted in favor. On the prevailing side.
He could, yeah, he contends he did. I mean, we'd have to check.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Don't we need a two-thirds vote to go back to...
I believe you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
But we can have that checked.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Correct. We need six.
Does he get to speak to his motion?
It is and have the, the breakdown.
According, bringing back something, reconsider something is...
Oh, it's just majority, you're saying?
It's debatable. No amendment, it's nonamendable, and it only needs a majority vote.
Okay. All right. Okay. So is my current understanding, it takes five votes, not six, to pass this. Councillor Westerveld, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I believe there's a lot more work that we can do on this. There are a lot of other things that I believe should be taken into account before we give any further tax abatements. As I stated last week, we do have a number of folks in the town that this will impact them in a negative way. You know, once upon a time, I was in the Navy, and I had kids coming to me on the boat, and they're going to sea, and they're leaving their wife and kids at home, and they can't, I mean, they're on food stamps. They can't afford milk. And now we're giving away, we're giving away tax money that we don't need to. Again, the committee was not one hundred percent committed to this course of action. They sounded very much to me like they were on offense, and they were not fully committed to giving any kind of tax abatement at all. And so I think we need to go back and look at this and make sure that it's really something that needs to happen. I personally, at this time, am not in favor of that.
Thank you. Councillor McBride?
Excuse me, I have a question in terms of timing. Maybe Town Manager Burke can assist. If the, the impact of the approval or whatever occurs from this motion, is it for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With, with that being said, I'm, I'm questioning why this is even being discussed now, because we spent a great length of time going through a detailed budget process for each fiscal year, in which we review all of these items. We reviewed all of the town's abatement plans. We came up with a number, which was one hundred sixty-three thousand, which was the number that we approved after lengthy discussions of numerous things for that month or whatever period it was. So in my view, this, this and other matters similar to it shouldn't even come up now, because our due diligence is done during the budget process. We're transparent during the budget process. People are watching those hearings. People are reviewing what we're doing. And I think it's fiscally irresponsible to change a program that's going to impact the budget, not in the budgetary cycle that we go through and what's approved by the charter and so forth. So I'm not, not, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of this program. What I'm saying is the timing of this is not proper. It's a thirty-nine percent increase, as I mentioned, at the, at the committee of the whole, and I don't think now is the time to do it. I think it should be done during the budget process. So I'm not going to vote against this, you know, the initial motion, but I'm not in favor of this. So I will be abstaining, as I did in the committee of the whole, because I don't think the timing is proper. Thank you.
Councillor Parker, was that a hand?
He just left.
Okay. Councillor Borlon?
She's left. She left the meeting? Yes.
She may have just disconnected, because I saw her have her hand up, but I don't, or she may have left. I don't know. Councillor Borlon, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I just, not against it. I think it's great. I'm always for human services and any form of outreach to our community, which I think is the most important. That is why I think some other issues should be on our agenda that should be being addressed to help our community. This helps a, what was it, two hundred and something folks, which is great. But I think that right now, we need to do a little bit more research. We're just accepting something on its first read. Its first draft coming before the council. Or did you, did you, oh, sorry. And I can support this at a later date. I just think that we, as a council, need to open up the floor, as I stated, to the community. Bring them around the table. Put it in the paper. Maybe there's people out there, because our process currently for people to find out what tax abatements... I was talking to a friend the other day, and her grandmother now is legally blind, and I said, "Go sign up for the tax." Oh, she said, "I didn't even know that existed." The only way people know that these tax exist, these exemptions, is when they go into the tax office and they see the papers. Well, if you're disabled and you're blind, you might not be able to see them. Maybe someone doesn't know. I'm not saying our town staff don't do a wonderful job. We are limited in what we can do. But there's not a direct correlation when you buy a house and someone says, "Hey, do you have a disability? Are you a veteran?" When I go into the town hall, that's not being asked of me. So we don't have a robust program to really identify that. This should go in the paper, and there might be some other people that might, this might extend to...
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
I'm looking at the town website, and Councillor Westerveld voted against this, so his motion is not valid.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider.
Hold on, one second.
Is that the one that changed, though? Wasn't there, you had mentioned something changed, something different?
If I made a mistake, I apologize.
So we have to know that vote?
Council Baumgartner has a motion to reconsider.
I'll second that. May I finish my discussion, or do you want him to speak to his motion?
Nope.
Thank you. So I'd just like to see this just put in the newspaper, put out on the web page, hey, we're talking about this. What does everybody think? You know, we, we cannot accept things as a council on its first read without any workshop or collaboration. No discredit to our committee. I mean, tonight, we, I served on the committee with the short-term rentals, and I didn't think it had any teeth. I said that at the last meeting. I'll say that about this document. It doesn't have enough teeth. It's not appropriate at this time. We can do so much more. And when you do this, then we're going to have the public outreach again, and the long public comments, because people are going to be upset. And so I encourage the council to reconsider this, not to vote it down necessarily, but let's bring it back at another time. So tonight, we'd have to vote it down to bring it back to the Cow, but let's research this under a different platform, under a different time. When we put things forward as a council, and we want to use our power to create an ordinance, you want to stand behind it and make sure that you have done your best to reach every corner of the town, so that their voice is being heard. If we're not doing that, then what agenda am I following? And that, for that, I will be voting down, voting this to, to, to be sent back to the Cow. And I encourage my council members to do such. Let's get behind the community and work together collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just speak for two seconds right here. I received a correspondence from a resident, Natalie Billings, and she, I think she had a great idea about these programs, and I asked the manager. Her idea was, could you list the tax abatement programs that we have in the town, and have them attached to the tax bills that get sent to people's homes?
It actually does get sent with the tax bills.
Okay. All right. Council Parker, did you have a, did you have a hand?
He's been coming in and out. I think he may be having some trouble.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, I don't, I don't belabor a lot of the points that were made, but, you know, as was stated, this, this is a program that the, you know, the state of Connecticut will allow our, our community to participate in. And as part of the study, or the research that the committee did, they did, their task was to recommend a set of, you know, you know, tax up changes, or tax programs for our residents. And they were tasked with identifying comprehensive solutions. And in my eye, while I am supportive of this program, it should be comprehensive. Their task was to look at a, an array of programs. And they did, however, as a council, we did not fully deliberate on those array of programs. We heard from the committee, but as soon as the committee made their recommendations, a motion was made on the floor. And so my ask of the council is, let's slow down, let's do our due diligence on the document. We've got, we've been dealing with short-term rentals, we've been dealing with complete streets, we've been dealing with no shortage of important issues confronting our community. But we got to, especially when it comes to tax policy, we got to do our due diligence, because we owe it to the taxpayers. Because when you do, as our T, former RTM member, Rosin Katuski, mentioned, when you do create tax abatement programs, you are also reducing the amount of taxes that our town is getting. So as a result of that, we need to do, even though these programs will help taxpayers directly, it is still a cost to the town. So as a result of that, let's do our due diligence. I'm not unsupportive of this, again, this tax abatement, but it should be comprehensive in nature, because that's what we asked the committee to embark on. So I will be supporting this motion to reconsider. It's not in opposition of what is proposed, but let's look at some of the other proposals as well, and determine on our own whether it should accompany this, you know, great proposal as well. And as Council McBride stated, we're not under the gun for any, any time, you know, we're not on any time crunch. We still have a long ways to go until, you know, budget season, and certainly, voting on, or when the next fiscal year will go into effect. Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker, did you have a hand?
Yeah, I was just going to point out, she's on there. Okay, thank you.
I can't hear, you might be muted on your phone. I think it's like star six.
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, okay. Sorry, I'm driving, so forgive me.
You have the floor.
What was the... Are we still on reconsideration?
Yes.
I just want to say a couple of things, if I'm able to, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. We didn't have time to review this and present something to us. This is only an additional thing. We already have things in place, tax statements for all of us, the military, some tax abatements for the seniors and disabled. This is an additional thing for the seniors and disabled, because once their money, the tax increase, that tax increase is increased by, food, and additional things. We are trying to help our citizens that we all care about, and it's a fact that we need to be forward. We have inflation currently, since our previous vote, where we just found out that things went up. So if we're not helping all citizens, like we've all been talking about, then what is the point? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Council Boardland?
Thank you. At the meeting, you know, the, the committee stated that, oh, they, they looked at the ones that would, you know, be able to directly, that the staff could kind of manage, our town staff. And what I didn't hear is, okay, well, what programs are out there that our town staff can handle, that we haven't brought on board? The whole list of the ones that the state has, that we have not even really looked at to make sure or vet, because our working group basically put forward, they didn't, it was stated over and over, that they didn't want to put forward anything that was going to put too much undue stress on, you know, the staff, which I respect. But that doesn't give me all the answers to what programs are out there that we could be looking into, and that way we could deliberate accordingly to see where we could make sure we put in the, that's where the public hearing would come in, honestly. So if we had the full document with all the programs, and we researched all of them, and kind of deliberated, then we'd be able to say to the public hearing, hey, maybe we need other staff to bring in this program, or we don't have enough on this, or that, or, you know, we really need to look at it as an entire package, and not limit it. Something that we bring forward, where we're already putting the brakes on, it's not doing the due diligence. So I just feel uncomfortable with that. I didn't feel comfortable the night when that was said. It's, it's not encumbersome. It's going to help a, a subgroup of folks, which I think need, definitely need the help. I brought up things in there where the numbers are, we moved to increase how much we're going to, you know, tell them that they don't have to owe, but for a married couple versus a single, that line should be looked at. I mean, if we're just going to change the upper number, why is it, you got to make, you can make more money as an individual than you can as married. That wasn't even considered. I brought it up. So again, put the brakes on, slow it down. There's no urgency. The people that are currently getting the brakes will still get their break, and then we can look to move towards adjusting this as we move forward. But I do not see this as a pressing item, and again, let's get the community around again.
Mr. Mayor, I, if you, I just had a point that I will bring to your attention. The statute that you're using, 12-1229N, in terms of legislative body means, is applied to an unconsolidated town, which would be the town meeting would take care of approval of this. So that's the RTM.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please? I didn't hear that.
So, so this resolution that you're considering bringing back to the Cow is, is applied through 12, it's Connecticut General Statute 12-129N, and that statute, when you look at the terms that it's using, it's an unconsolidated town, which is the town of Groton. We're not consolidated. We'd have to go through all sorts of stuff to become consolidated. I don't think the city, wildfire districts, okay. So that means our legislative body...
Is the RTM.
Is the RTM, when it comes to something like this. Okay.
That is not correct. It's been reviewed by Ray Burrow, our tax attorney, as well as I mean.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
No, it's very clear that it's the town council. There's no real question on it.
Okay, I'll get a different opinion. I don't want us to get in trouble.
All right. Okay, seeing no other hands, so I'll call for a vote on a motion to reconsider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I got McBride, I got Baumgartner, I got Boardland, and I got Westerville. Opposed? I got Jones, I got Melendez.
Aye.
I got Franco. I got Casiri, I got Parker. Okay, fails. Four in favor, five opposed, zero abstaining. Backs to the main motion. All right. All in favor of the resolution to create a local tax abatement, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, got Jones, Casiri, Franco, Parker, Melendez, opposed. Westerville, McBride, Baumgartner, Boardland. No abstaining. Passes five in favor, four opposed, zero abstaining.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
There's a councillor that is consistently making comments throughout the whole meeting, and I would respectfully ask that they stop, when they do not have the floor to speak.
Thank you. I ask the councillors speak, only speak when they have the floor. Onto Local 818 Collective Bargaining Agreement 2022-2025. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the tentative agreement reached between the town and Local 818 of Council Number Four, AFSCIO, for the term July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025, whereas the town of Groton and Local 818 of Council Number Four, AFSCIO, reached a tentative agreement on a successive collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025, and whereas the bargaining unit membership voted to approve the agreement, and whereas the approval is recommended by the town, town's negotiators, therefore be resolved, the Groton Town Council hereby approves the agreement and the expenditure of funds necessary to implement the agreement, inclusive of attachment C pension agreement between the town and Local 818 of Council Number Four, AFSCIO, on a successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. So moved.
Second, Casiri.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. Seeing no discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto nuclear safety grant. I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing acceptance of the Nuclear Safety Emergency Program Grant, whereas the town of Groton Police Department applied for and was awarded $65,900 in pool funding from the State of Connecticut Nuclear Safety Emergency Program, NSCP, and whereas this funding will be used to purchase web-based cameras to be located along evacuation points around our community to help telecommunications, as well as officers in the event and evacuation is ordered, and whereas remaining grant funds will be applied to EMD salaries and drill supplies, now therefore be resolved, the town council authorizes Town Manager John Burt to execute any and all documents to accept the NSCP grant funding in the amount of $65,900, and refer the matter to the RTM. So moved.
Second, Boardland?
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Boardland. Seeing no discussion. Council Boardland?
Yeah, just a question for the town manager. I just asked for decorum. I won't call point of order, but people are rolling their eyes when I just asked to speak, but that's okay. But I won't call point of order on it. I just have a question for the town manager. What things can't this money be used for?
I don't think there's a real exhaustive list. You have to build, you can use it for things you can make a tie into nuclear safety.
Thank you.
Council Baumgartner?
Yes, I noticed in the resolution, it said the funding will be used to purchase web-based cameras to be located along evacu, evacuation points. Where will those evacuation points be?
Excuse me, could he speak up into the microphone, please?
Council Baumgartner inquired about where the cameras will be placed.
That was a question for the town manager.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. And Chief Pasaro was here at the last meeting to answer questions. I have the same information you have.
And they will be used solely for the purposes of, and they'll be used solely for the purposes in the event, in the event of an evacuation, as stated in the resolution?
That is what I've been told, yes.
Thank you.
Council Boardland?
I guess my question then is, will those cameras be on all the time, then if they're only on for when there's an evacuation, I guess? Are they just all constantly patrolling and monitoring?
I really don't think they'd be constantly patrolling and monitoring. I'm sure if there's cameras at a place where there's some sort of emergency, they could use them, but I don't believe there's an intent to use them regularly.
Yeah, that would, I'm just curious how that would work. I mean, because they're meant for emergency evacuation, so it seems there was an all-call of nuclear, you know, meltdown that those should click on, but that's, doesn't seem like they should be, I mean, unless we feel we need them. Is there a need to have them on all the time, or? Or was that discussed, John?
It was not discussed. Again, Chief Pasaro, as I did last time, to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Council Westerville?
I'll just give my, my opinion here. As somebody who uses incident management cameras, and we have them in a number of different locations, they're, they're always on. It's more trouble to try to take them down than turn them back on. So they'll leave them on, and most likely, if we have a video management system, they'll probably record it for like a period of two weeks. Just for incident managing purposes, it would be pointless to buy the cameras, put them out there, and not use them all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Casiri?
Mr. Burt? Are you there?
Yes.
Sorry. Didn't Chief Pasaro indicate that they would not be used in any way for enforcement action?
I believe that's what he said at the meeting, if I remember correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Resolution adopting a town of Groton Complete Streets policy, whereas complete streets are streets designed and operated to enable safe use and support mobility for all users, including people of all ages and abilities, and whereas the town of Groton desired to improve its right of...
improve its right-of-way by making them safer and more accessible for people of all ages, races, ethnicity, income, and physical ability, as well as all modes of transportation, and whereas the Town of Groton formed a Complete Streets Working Group to draft a policy, and whereas the Complete Streets Committee or Working Group completed its work and submitted the draft policy to the Groton Town Council, and whereas the Town Council at its July 26, 2022 Committee of the Hall reviewed the draft policy and recommended its adoption, and now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council adopts the Town of Groton Complete Streets Policy. So moved.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Bordelon.
Thank you. I think we move by Bordelon.
Council Bordelon?
I think this is a step in the right direction. I think, you know, it doesn't mean that every street, as was stated, is going to be necessarily falling under this, but as we, as a council, voted to be more, you know, looking at the resiliency and sustainability of our community, we need to look at the infrastructure of our walkability and our bikeability and our driveability in our town and our safety. I did speak at the city meeting last night, and I'm hoping that the city also joins in on this, considering they have two large employers, and then we have the sub base on the town side. Having that accessibility throughout our community is only going to enhance the welfare and well-being. I think it was really awesome that Ledge Light spoke to this tonight. As I stated, I did serve on a committee before that looked at inequalities to having walkable communities and health and welfare, well-being. And, you know, it makes me think of the people who spoke tonight at Branford. You know, when you come out of Branford Manor, on one stretch, you know, there's no sidewalk along where the golf course used to be, you know, and things like that. Imagine folks there, people have come here and spoken, said they do not have cars, and having the ability to have a safe way to exit that neighborhood. That's a complete streets model I can get around. This council also did look at Thomas Road and did some modest modifications to that. Could it have been wider? Possibly, would have been more money. But things got done, and it has enhanced and improved the walk and bikeability over there. And that's just something small on a small scale, but think across the whole town, my neighborhood included. You come out, and then sidewalks just end randomly. There's buttons with no sidewalks. I mean, it's like, who's running some of this? Some of this has something to do with the state as well. I know for myself, four years ago, or the last three years, I've been asking for a sidewalk on Rainville, and I did reach out to Senator Summers and Chris Connolly and the city mayor and sent an email out, and that's something I've been very passionate about, and they are looking to see ways to improve that. I don't know if the city will adopt anything like this, but I see this as not really an adoption of anything, more as a language or a mindset to think about. When we think about how to be more responsible with our environment, we think of ways of reducing plastic. This is just a way of thinking, more than a action. It's like, okay, we're going to build this, or how can we make this better? Let's think, oh, wait, this neighborhood doesn't have a sidewalk. People here live in apartments. So I'm really excited for this. I think it can only grow, and I'm interested to see what types of groups maybe can form from this, maybe a group that's from the biking community and other folks who live in apartment areas that are looking. And I commend Counselor Baumgartner for his great work and idea and collaboration with the community on this, and I look forward to seeing where this can go. And again, I hope the rest of Groton and its subdivisions work together collaboratively to think about this from a health and well-being perspective and safety. Thank you.
Council Franco?
Yeah, so this came to us at our last Committee of the Hall meeting, and I am in favor of it. But I would like to also notate, at our last Committee of the Hall meeting, that was the first time we read this. It was the first time it came to the council. We didn't do a public hearing. We didn't ask for the public's input. We didn't do a whole big process about it, so I would guess we would say we were boxing people out. I did hear from people in the community that heard the argument and recognized that there was, excuse me? You're speaking to me.
Someone was laughing as you called point of orders on people. Someone was laughing.
Council Franco has the floor.
Can you just?
Council Franco has the floor.
Can you ask for people to have decorum?
Point of order.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Council Franco, you have the floor.
I'd like to point of order.
What is your point of order?
She just made another comment. Counselor Bordelon, you have consistently throughout this whole evening spoke.
Okay.
When you did not have the floor.
Point of order. She did not like pointer finger.
You honestly should be censured.
Oh.
And I think you should be.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor Franco.
You consistently interrupt.
Point of order.
Decorum on you.
Point of order. Point of order.
No, I have the floor with a point of order.
All right.
So I'd just like to notate, while I am in great favor of this, that it just goes to show that, as I heard from some people in the community, it depends, I guess, on which motions on the floor, on which ones there are issues with. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Westerville?
Just to clarify the discussion about the complete streets, we sat here and talked about it for well over an hour, so there was a lot of discussion on that. And I think everybody agrees, it's a serious benefit to the city, or to the town, rather. So we did discuss it at length. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good policy ought to pass.
I'd like to call the question.
I have a motion to move the question by Counsel Franco. Seconded by Melendez. Non-debatable, needs two-thirds to pass, which is six. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So by my count, I have seven in favor, two opposed, Bordelon, Baumgartner, and zero The motion is moved, question is moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Distentions carries unanimously nine in favor.
One.
Yes.
One. A state.
On which vote?
A state.
You're abstaining on the complete streets policy vote? Okay. We'll check with that. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining.
I think that was probably for the moving the questions, but.
Counsel Parker, which vote are you abstaining on?
I, we're doing the complete streets. I thought we already moved the question, correct?
Right, correct, correct. Okay. Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, Parker.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, seven, two, zero. Now it should be six, two, one.
What do you mean?
If there were two opposed.
No, no, no. Oh, she abstained on the complete streets.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Eight, zero, one.
I have a motion to adjourn by Counsel Bordelon.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Jones. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Distentions were adjourned at 10:54.
Opposed.
Okay. Eight in favor, one opposed, Casiri.